Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's December 7th. It is about 7:00 PM and this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee. We will begin with public participation. Would anybody like to address the committee? Seeing none, we will move on to good news. Dr. Vinovich?
Thank you. I have a letter here that I'd like to read for the record. This is from the Foundation for Teaching Economics. It was made out to Principal Palladino. Dear Principal Palladino, I am delighted to inform you about an outstanding accomplishment by your student, Jessica Hanson. Jessica attended the Economics for Leaders Program at Babson College this past summer. This was one of the 13 Economics for Leaders Programs conducted by the Foundation for Teaching Economics throughout the United States. Each of these week-long residential educational programs helps approximately 30 high school seniors gain a better understanding of how people make choices in commercial societies and how market economics work. During the week, students explore the correlation between economics and leadership through rigorous and challenging activities. The program is competitive with two applicants for every available space. At the conclusion of each program, we administer a rigorous 30-question examination designed to measure each student's understanding of basic economic principles. Jessica placed at the level of proficiency. This academic accomplishment bodes well for Jessica's college applications or other pursuits and, as you will see, is formally recognized in the enclosed certificate. It gives me a great pleasure to convey this good news and certificate to you, and I hope that you will personally present the certificate to Jessica with as much fanfare as you deem appropriate. So, the fanfare was reading this out, and congratulations, Jessica. And Michelle, do you have the original?
Jessica already has it.
Jessica already has it. Okay. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Jessica, you want to tell us how easy this course was?
Oh, I wouldn't say it was too difficult. I wouldn't say it was easy. We were required for seven days to get up at 7:00 o'clock in the morning and spend about five to six hours each day learning economics.
Wow.
Yeah. It was a rigorous course, and I feel like it scratched the general surface of what economics consists of, as I went in not knowing anything about economics. So, it was a great eye-opener for me.
You probably know more than half of what the population of the country knows. That's outstanding. Great. Anything else for good news from the superintendent?
I'd like to comment on last Friday. We had two members of the Mass School Building Authority come to Wareham. Mr. Brusso, retired school committee member, was present, as well as Senator Pacheco. The principal of the school, Joan Siemens, Anna Miranda, and myself walked the building. And I truly believe, at the end of that tour, the gentlemen from the Mass School Building Authority understood why we needed the reconstruction and the renovation and some additional classroom space for an addition. And so, it was well received. I hope to, within the month, hear from them. And if that is the case, we will be preparing two articles for the April Town Meeting. And we know that we can support, we can depend on the support of the 600 sets of parents who are at the Minor Forest to be present to help ensure that this passes.
That is good news. Rachel, any good news? Rhonda?
I just wanted to say that there is, you know, I won't call them out each specifically, but there's been several events at the elementary level around town and just the holiday events that are going on. The two events that, or the one event that I attended at the Minor Forest School was a great event. The kids had a great time. Our fifth and sixth graders did a beautiful job singing. There was a lot of activities for the kids. It was well-attended, and I think the PTA, it was a good fundraiser for them. I know that there was also one that went on at DeGuss. I just encourage everyone to look at the papers. There's a lot of fundraisers for the schools that are going on right now. If you're looking to support a nonprofit or to support a charity, think of your schools. That there is a lot of, we do have needs in the schools, and the PTAs do a phenomenal job of raising money to do enrichment programs for our children, field trips, things like that. And so, I would just encourage everyone to take a look and do their best to support the schools this holiday season.
Thank you. Jessica? I'm sorry, Kenny?
All set.
Okay. Jessica?
There's a couple of things going on at the high school. Tomorrow, which is the 8th, we're having a step-up day for the eighth graders at the middle school, and they can come. It's from 6 to 8 o'clock, and they can find out about the different clubs and organizations that they can join in at the high school when they join as freshmen. Also, our can drive and coat drive are continuing on until this Friday, the 9th. So, last-minute cans are coming in, in hopes for that ice cream party. And I think, well, I know a lot of students are looking forward to the holiday vacation and are getting prepared for that as well.
That sounds like good news.
It is. It's very good news, I think.
You don't have senior writers yet, do you?
No.
Oh, good.
I'm one of the lucky ones.
Glad to hear it. Dr. Sylvia, welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry I'm late. Please forgive me.
It's okay. Any good news?
I'm a working man again.
Yes, I understand that. Any good news for the committee and the community?
No, I don't think so, not at this time.
Okay. Okay. We'll move on to the minutes of the meeting of November 16th. Do I have any corrections, additions, changes anybody would like to make for those minutes? If not, I'll take a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
4-0-1.
Mr. Chair, I think I probably should abstain since I missed the first half hour. What's the, about?
Yeah, but you made the rest of three hours.
Uncomfortable.
I'll abstain for 20 minutes.
I think we can record it as 4-0-1.
Okay.
As long as our parliamentarian agrees.
He was there. He was considered as present.
Yes. Yes. Okay. All right. Committee reports. I know we had a budget committee meeting, I believe. Correct, Dr. Vinovich?
Yes.
Ken? Rachel? Yes?
Yeah. I mean, I think it was more preliminary than anything.
That's okay. Anything about?
Yeah, I was just going over some of the things that we're going to talk about. So, at this time, Mr. Chair, there's nothing major to report. We were just looking at dates and things going forward for our next meeting. So, we really didn't sit down and get into it.
Okay. But I think it is fair to say that, starting Thursday?
Tomorrow.
Which is tomorrow. Tomorrow. We have two full days of presentations regarding the budget from department heads, principals, et cetera. Yes?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. And that really is the kickoff for the process from a meeting perspective. Any other committees' policies?
I just have, actually, one question regarding the budget. As soon as the dates are confirmed, and if they are already confirmed, and I'm almost positive they have been confirmed for a while, can we send out another press release to the local papers, letting them know what the timeline is for the budget, also promoting the public hearings? Again, just another way of letting the community know that we're starting the budget process, that we are, what the dates are, and when they have an opportunity to come and listen through the budget process.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other committee reports?
Policy review.
Please.
Great. We have, you have three policies in your packet that are up for approval tonight. Do you want me to take them one at a time, or do you want me to go through all three of them and then vote as one?
One at a time, please.
Okay. The first one that we have is community use of school vehicles. There was, there is a lot of discussion around this policy. Most of the discussion had to do with procedure, and the committee decided that we were going to stick to having the policy read as is, except for one change, and that instead, that there was going to be additional discussion at the superintendent level and at the transportation level on the procedures, including things like responsibility of, again, this is community use of school vehicles, so this is outside of transporting students, but responsible for tickets and violations, procedures including the application, participants, or how many participants are on there, insurance, capacity, liability, all of that. So, there was going to be additional conversations going on at the superintendent level to make sure that we have all the procedures in place. But, for the policy, the one thing that we added is in the sentence that reads stipulations include that the user pays the entire cost of the trip, including depreciation and amortization, and that a school employee currently and appropriately licensed. Before, I just said currently licensed. We added the words "and appropriately licensed."
Okay. Any comments or questions on the community use of school vehicles policy? Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-0. Next.
The next policy is the emergency closing policy. We did keep this policy as is. We did have a lot of discussion around some of the concerns that were brought up due to the hurricane. We thought that the policy was appropriate, that it does state that the superintendent does communicate with different officials, but ultimately, it is his decision to decide on school closings. This is similar. We had a lot of the policy folks go and do research about this, and we are, this is similar to other districts and how their policy reads.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I might. After this conversation at the policy review, I actually bumped into Lieutenant Walzac at Town Hall, and he and I had a conversation, and he identified the two sergeants who worked the overnight shift when I would be calling to find out road conditions from the police department. So, I've already got the names of the two sergeants that I will be contacting, as well as Mark Gifford is staying with us for another, I guess, six months, and he'll be available for my calls as well at 4:30 in the morning when I have to make these conversations.
You're not going to call Jessica and ask her?
Oh, he's off.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Ken?
Was it in this policy, or when we had discussions about the nightmare of all the parents that were picking up the kids, when you had early dismissal? Was that covered in this, or is that entirely different?
That's another, there's another one, actually, I think it is included, because it says, "Replace delayed opening and early dismissal procedures" policy.
So, you're right. It's all.
We use all of this when we make those decisions as well.
But, so, we don't want any, that's, you're using your judgment. There's no language in there about parents not picking up the kids because it creates the problem that you have 70, 80 vehicles when you're trying to get buses out of there.
But, the difficulty, and we actually had the conversation that evening, and what I said to the body was that very rarely do I ever send the children home early unless it was something freak that came up, and I know that it's going to be two inches an hour for the next five hours, and that people are going to get stuck there if we don't send them home. But if we can, and if the roads are appropriate, and usually with the DPW, they will send out trucks before dismissal time. They'll make sure that we have some sand and salt on the roads. People are away at work, and if we send home elementary school children and they think that they're supposed to be in school, we create more danger by doing that. So, we really try never to do it. However, it is possible, like I said, that all of a sudden, a freak storm appears and we've got, you know, two inches an hour, and we may have to make the call. But, you know, we will, we have the availability of calling five different numbers on our telephone system. So, it isn't just home. It's cell phones, it's work numbers. Sometimes, we're accused of over-notifying.
Anything else? I confess, I've got some small discomfort about the phrase, "with school officials from neighboring towns." I'm uncomfortable with the notion that we would be requiring consultation with another town as a part of making a decision for Wareham. Can someone explain to me the logic of that requirement?
Yes.
Please.
The current practice among superintendents, and as I said, the 4:30 AM phone calls, is that I am in contact with the Upper Cape because Wareham is one of the communities that are part of Upper Cape's region. So, I'm the contact to tell him how the roads are in Wareham. I have teachers that may live.
But you're not consulting him. You're giving him information.
Right. But I'm also consulting by asking what he's planning on doing. I also talk to the Bourne Superintendent. I talk to Old Rochester and Plymouth. Now, Plymouth, believe it or not, probably has the most different weather than we have because we're on the opposite coasts. But, so, we do talk, and I will admit that on occasion, we have had school here when the other communities haven't. But I'm making that decision on what's outside my door, and, you know, that's the nice thing about living in a town. I mean, I can go outside to my driveway and find out how the roads are, where some of the other superintendents actually live in other areas and commute to their schools. So, they have to rely firsthand from the police and from DPW. But I take all of that into effect, as well as, the computers now are pretty good with these weather reports. They really can give us what is happening, and I code. You know, there may be some differences here and there, but it's part of the practice that I do. I do consult. I don't, they don't make up my mind, but I do get information from them.
I guess, there's obviously nothing we would write would say you can't consult.
Right.
But the fact that we're actually requiring you to consult is interesting, and you don't mind that?
No, because it's the practice. It's what we currently do, so I don't think it's a bad thing to do.
Okay. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-0. And one more, correct?
Yes, the graduation requirements. And Scott, I might ask your help a little bit with the graduation requirements. This is where the bulk of the changes were. This was a policy that we reviewed on the very first policy review meeting, policy review group this year. We sent it back saying that the language, as it was written, was confusing. Remember, we did approve additional requirements this year. This policy had to be changed, and what we wanted to do was make certain that it was clear and that it was understood. We have to go back after the 2015 year, and it's going to become a standard policy again, but we had to reflect the changes from year over year over year. And so, that's what you see in front of you. It was sent back because when taking a look at graduation requirements, students through the class of 2013 and then through the class of 2014 and beyond, the way that it was written originally, again, was a little bit confusing. So, the administration at the high school came back and came up with this chart, which does make a lot more sense. We did have some questions, a little bit of debate on some of the language, but we were convinced that the administration did take a hard look at this and felt comfortable with putting this forward through to the school committee.
I have one question, and Scott, I'm uncomfortable having you, you know, not talking in front of a microphone, so maybe you could come up and grab one. Is that one working? Christian, is that one at the table working?
Yes.
Thank you. The paragraph, the three-sentence paragraph after the class of 2015, 130 credits, talks about students are not allowed to earn more than 30 credits outside of day school. These courses will be limited to courses a student has failed in his or her previous years of high school. Duly enrolled students attending local colleges as part of their approved academic experience may earn 40 credits. Could you elaborate a little bit on that paragraph?
Absolutely. The concern is, in the past, this has been a policy, first of all, this is always, we haven't, we didn't change that policy. I think maybe we changed the font, but the concern is that students can stay in a class and kind of audit the class for the school year, if you will, and then, in 20 days over the summer, make up the credit. So, we wanted to try and strengthen this, and again, it's not a change, but the idea is that they can only take six classes outside of school. Traditionally, it would have been summer school, but now, night school as well is an opportunity for students to make it up. So, we didn't want to have, give the students more than six opportunities to make up classes that they failed, to do that through either summer school or night school.
In the theory, it will get them to take the day school that much more seriously.
Exactly. And not be in that kind of audit mode where they're just in there doing minimal work, getting the grade that they need so they can go on to summer school. They'll give up 20 mornings of their summer, pass it that way, and it's very difficult to cover, obviously, the curriculum in 20 days that needs to be covered.
Okay. So, Jessica, you're a duly enrolled, correct? So, the last sentence?
40 credits.
40 credits, so.
That would be, basically, they could take classes all junior and senior year, and that would be, I shouldn't say all junior and senior. They'd be able to be in a, either morning session or an afternoon session for both their junior and senior. We have a couple of students in my advisory that are doing that right now, and they will finish next May with 40 credits, 40 college credits.
That much above what they would have achieved without doing that.
So, they'll basically, for those students, to put it in college terms, they'll have 24 college credits already taken care of.
How are you finding the experience, Jessica?
I love it, personally. I really enjoy the, just that, for the college students, they're paying to be there, so you know that everybody in that classroom is just as dedicated to the studies as I am, whereas you may have a couple of students in class who may disrupt it, and you may only have that one student, but they may be bringing the others down, whereas in college, you either want to be there, you're paying to be there, so you're not going to waste your opportunity.
I understand. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Scott.
Okay.
Motion to approve, please.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Superintendent's report.
I've already given my report as during good news, so I would like to pass the baton to the chairman, because I see that that is missing, so if I can give this time to the chairman for his report.
Yeah, I just have one thing I wanted to mention. I think there's a misconception about the school committee's position on transportation. First of all, at the last meeting, we debated the transportation issue somewhat, and we decided not to vote, and I'm distinguishing between not voting as compared to not approving. We decided not to vote on a motion regarding a study of the Transportation Department by students under the supervision of a professor. The reason we decided not to vote on it was twofold. One is, we were given the information from the town administrator that in fact was too late to have that take place in the January second semester part of a college curriculum. And the second reason is also from the town administrator that he had a different plan for getting us some buses that would be effectuated potentially, and he emphasized that it was only potentially by a special town meeting. So, for those reasons, it didn't make any sense for us to vote on it. But I think there's a broader issue here, and the broader issue is, the Board of Selectmen and the school committee are separately elected officials. We have separate responsibilities, and in the case of this town in particular, we meet essentially at the town administrator in several areas, especially the purchasing of buses and more broadly, the budget. So, I think it's entirely appropriate for the school committee to take the direction from the town administrator when it applies to the responsibilities of the school committee, especially in purchasing and the budget. So, I feel strongly that we have acted constructively and appropriately with regard to transportation. I want to add one more thing, and that is, we remain open to providing any information that people might want, especially the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee, in order to facilitate their decisions with respect to the purchasing of buses. And I will also tell you that we are almost complete a process of a full profit and loss statement for transportation for this current fiscal year. And by that, I mean, we are looking at it as an entirely separate business, providing numbers, including the depreciation expenses associated with buses, if we had in fact purchased them and were depreciating them. When this is available, and we expect it to be available for the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee within the next few days to a week at most, we hope that this is a compelling story about the decision that we have made to date about keeping the Transportation Department part of the town's responsibilities as compared to privatizing. Nevertheless, we will rely on the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee to scrutinize that document and make their own decisions about what makes sense for the town with respect to the purchase of buses. And finally, I would add on a personal note, I think the urgency with respect to the purchase of buses cannot be understated, and therefore, for us to agree to not use whatever small resources we might have, specifically through our revolving account, to relieve the burden of a very old bus fleet, it would have been irresponsible for us to agree not to purchase buses when we could potentially alleviate, in however small a way, the problems that the Transportation Department has with their fleet. So, I hope that clarifies it, but we remain open, and we are going to do our part to make sure that this issue is finally put to rest, because there are a lot more important things to talk about, frankly. With that, we will move on. Let's see. Yes. Mr. Landger.
How are you?
Pleasure to have you here.
Living a dream over here.
You are?
Living a dream, yeah.
Well, we're glad to hear that. The floor is yours.
Okay. It's the first time I've addressed it, the budget, as a first-year athletic director, so I hope I covered everything that you need, and some of the percentages and things I'll go over in a minute. And I'm going to bounce around. I also have extra hard copies, if anybody wants a hard copy.
We're a green machine up here, but Dr. Sylvia might take one.
He's got one already.
He has one.
Yeah, I'll take one.
Isn't that the same as?
Oh, I got one. I know, it's the same thing. I didn't know it was the same thing.
Anyone else?
I'll take one.
Oh, they want a hard copy? Don't give it to them.
I just intend to write notes to you.
Don't give it to them.
And I'm going to bounce around a little bit on the report. And I'm going to bounce around a little bit on the report. The first thing, the third page inside the packet, our expenses. Salaries was the fall salaries. This is all just the fall report. We tried to keep anything else out of it. Any of the winter stuff has not been paid up yet, so we try to stick to mostly the fall. Salaries was $69,459. Custodians, that's for football games, $2,319. Secretary, that's my Ruthie, who by the way, is fabulous, and she helped put together this report. Her and I stayed late. Ruthie Donahue is terrific.
Please say hi to Ruth for us, we remember her fondly.
She's the best. She wants to move to Florida. I feel the Florida peninsula is going to snap off and end up in the ocean, so she's got to stay protecting her. I'm actually been calling her husband and saying the same thing, you can't take her from me, so...
She waits long enough, it'll be as warm up here.
Yeah, right now, she's in, yeah, she seems comfortable. She gets cold when it's 70 degrees, though. Officials were $14,103. Our athletic trainer, it's quarterly, we pay it three times, $7,733. Game health, that's for football games, collecting tickets, things like that, was $14,800. Police EMT, $3,615. And our supplies, that comes out of our supply account for fall supplies we ordered starting in July, was $14,439. Transportation, $8,702. Bus payroll is $5,562. And other annual bills, which we, our, yeah, our budget was a total of $144,000, but other annual bills, we paid the MIA dues, which is $3,000 plus, our South Coast Conference dues, we paid in full, which is, can be paid halves. You can pay one half before, I believe it's December 1st, and one half before March 1st. We paid it in full, to the total of $3,725. And we also paid our entire trainer's salary, our trainer and supplies, I'm sorry, for the year, for 1603. So we're ahead on some of the payments for the year. Back to page one. And the breakdown is, as you go through the breakdown per sport, we did buy expenses, now I'm on page four, I apologize, buy expenses, what we paid out in football, what we took in for revenue, for the totals, for boys soccer, girls soccer, volleyball, cross country, field hockey, cheerleading, and golf. If you report back to the third page, that is the, our supplies that we ordered for the athletics was $14,439. Difficult to break down, because we ordered soccer nets, which both boys and girls use. A lot of our supplies, ropes, things like that, we use as a program, the entire program uses. Uniforms were specified in, you know, we needed to get certain things to make our kids, have our kids correctly fitted. Boys soccer uniforms, we spent $1,851 on. We had to buy volleyball pads, which was an expense we're not going to pay for a while, because the poles were exposed. I went out to a scrimmage, and I saw the poles were exposed, and I had put it out to bid right away that night to try to get that, because we didn't want to go run into the pole and get hurt. And we ordered two soccer nets, which was very high expense, $3,308, but what our goal was there is, we needed an extra set of soccer goals. The ones that were on playing field are not in good shape, and we took those and we put them on the practice field. We put the new goals on the game field, and that kept all our soccer teams, boys and girls, on campus, preventing that bus ride from Wareham High School to Deccus every day. And I think in the long run, that's a save. And also, it's good to have our kids on campus. The new boys soccer coach did a terrific job with our kids, thought the same way Scott and I did, was that it's good for kids to drive by and see the kids practicing on campus, and maybe they come out and want to be part of it. And one of my biggest goals is always to improve our participation. The first page, some of the good stuff. And again, Ruthie helped me with this, so if it sounds like not my language, that's because it isn't. Ruthie's a lot smarter than I am. For the fall athletic season, our total expenses were $1,444,000. This includes salaries, officials, game health, police, EMT, transportation supplies, most of the stuff I went over. Revenue from users' fees was $18,300, and gate receipts from football games were $11,509. A breakdown of revenue expenses was on the following page. We had a total of 237 athletes this fall, up from 205 last year. I believe that, you know, that's one of my goals, is we ask each of our programs to try to increase their participation rate by 20 percent.
Is that on the, excuse me, is that on the report, the number of participants?
Yes.
First page? Thanks, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm on the first page, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, a total of 237 athletes.
Thank you.
This fall, up from 205. The grade point average for each of our fall, all of our fall athletes combined is impressive, 85 percent. So I took every kid that had played sports and per program, and did all the calculations on, it came out to 85 percent, which was terrific, because, you know, I appreciate the clapping, because they work awful hard. They hit 5, 6 o'clock at night, still going home and doing their studies. So then we've asked our coaches to do a number of grade reports, more than one, even after grades come out, to do another one for the football kids to keep on track of their grades. So that has improved. In the fall of 2011, the following programs completed a number of community service projects. We asked each and every one of our athletic teams in the fall to conduct at least one community service project. Girls soccer team did a great job. She participated in the Nike School Drive, where they collected over 300 pairs of sneakers, which are recycled and used to create playgrounds. They also have their students volunteer as coaches for the U8 and U12 soccer teams, giving back to the community on Saturdays. Boys soccer team coached youth players on Saturdays and volunteered as referees. The cheerleaders donated three hours each week for the A and B level Pop Warner team. That's three hours each for each athlete to donate, to give back to the young cheerleaders in town. Golf team completed golf course field cleanup, helping clean up the driving range, clearing debris, particularly after the storm, they're out there for a few hours. The girls volleyball team, in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, wore pink wristbands and held a fundraiser for cancer research. Field hockey team did the same for Cancer Awareness Month, had a game where they're all pink uniforms. And watching the game, it was, the uniforms were cool, I think we ought to adopt them, I think they were nicer than the ones we have. And they were pink, and the girls loved it, and they were running around the building with it, and so that was really cool to see. Our football team took part in the Dick Mahoney toy drive, also read to elementary school students. And the boys and girls cross country team completed a canned food drive for Damian's pantry to help families in need. Some of our highlights, as far as competing wise, our girls volleyball team had their best season in years, making the state tournament. We played over in Born. They lost that game, but it was terrific setting for Wareham and to go there, and I actually brought my whole family. It was the first time my son would attend a Wareham event. He wouldn't, well, he'd come to football games because he loves football, but anything besides football, he wouldn't go to soccer or anything. So he went to the tournament game with me, and Scott and I in the process of trying to get him a T-shirt, to try to make him a Wareham fan. I told him the Vikings better than the Panther, the Vikings better than the Plymouth South Panther, and he didn't talk to me for like two days. So I'm going to take baby steps with him. Our cheerleading team had their best season ever. Our cheerleading coach does a terrific job, Maddie, she's awesome, placed in second in the SCC Conference, and third in the regions. Some of the programs we instituted this year for the first time, we had a preseason coaches' meeting, where I handed out binders with the coaches' checklist, and in those binders were things that we want to look out for, things like hazen and MIA rules, and I had a packet of rules in there for them. We had a meet the coaches night, we'll meet the parents tonight, where we met in the auditorium. I addressed the fall athletic, athletes and their parents as a whole, and then each program broke up into separate classrooms, where they gave the parents their code of conduct and their coaching philosophies and goals. Gave parents an opportunity to ask questions before the season, so that they're all on the same page. If a kid is to miss practice, he or she understands what's the coaches' rules. We held a all-fall sports meeting to talk about our athletes making good decisions and participating in sports throughout the school year. So we took all our fall athletes and asked them, what are you doing after this? What are you playing in the winter? What are you playing in the spring? And we actually made a list, and if they said they were going out for winter track, I made a list, Ruthie and I, and we gave them to the coaches, to the winter coaches, and the spring coaches will get the same. They'll get a list of athletes, and not all of them went out, and I ran around the building, chased them down, and they're starting to like Plymouth, they're starting to get used to running away from me when they see me. So when I come out of my office, I see the kids start running the other side of the gym, I said, oh, they're getting tired of me already. And we instituted, this was a really fun thing, we instituted a captain's lunch. We brought all our captains in, and we had it catered, and the captains talked about what the importance of role of a captain is. We sat them by teams with their head coaches, and they got to eat some good Italian food and talk about their roles, and then we asked them to take those things that they were talking about, learning, and bring them back to their team, spend 15 minutes with their team and bring it back. There's so many things that, reasons and situations where you go to something and you learn something, but we never apply it. So we asked them to apply it, and we asked our coaches to follow up with it, and once a week, talk about some of the things we talked about in that captain's lunch. At the South Coast Conference All-Stars, they're listed there, I believe we had seven SCC All-Stars, we had 11 honorable mentions. A sportsmanship award, each sport gets one, and those are the young lady and gentlemen that got their sportsmanship awards. Our field hockey team, as a team, received the sportsmanship award for the South Coast Conference, which is a great honor. And for the year 2011, I wasn't here, when Tina was Athletic Director, Wareham High School received the MIA Sportsmanship Honorable Mention Award, which we have a banner, and we got the 2011 award. And that means, I actually asked the MIA, so what does this mean? They gave me this number, and I says, what does it mean? And what it is, is that no athlete, coach, had any disciplinary problems for the entire 2011 season, which there was no kids thrown out of a competition, and there was no coaches that were written up for any discipline issues. So that's a pretty good thing. And then our coaches, at the end, we all met, I met with each individual program about end of the season goals and things that we want to improve on for next year. I spent a probably a good half an hour with each program, with their coaches, discuss how to increase participation in keeping students academically eligible, and ways to, you know, that we can make athletics at Wareham better. And that's that. If there's any questions, I know there's probably a ton of questions, and I'll do the best to answer them. Look you with the budget stuff.
Rachel?
I'm not allowed to ask questions about athletics, so I would just like to say, no, not allowed. No, I don't, we don't do that in my family. No offense.
Let it be clear, it's not the chair that's preventing her.
No, no, it's my lack of ability. I like the, what I'm thrilled to see, absolutely thrilled to see, is the community work that the kids are doing. That's phenomenal, I love it. And I love the idea of sitting down, having luncheons together, talking about leadership. That's a great community builder. I'm just absolutely thrilled to see those things. That makes me happier than scores or anything like that. I'm happy for the scores, for them, if you understand them, most of the time I don't. But I love the community building, and kudos to you, and kudos to the kids for the work they're doing.
And our coaches, they really have worked hard, and, you know, I was really impressed with their work ethic with these community service projects. They did a great job.
It's great, and that's what we need around here. That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Miranda?
Thank you for this report. I...
I like the cover, I mean, that's, you know, that...
Is that Ruthie?
You wanted to stand me on a computer, yeah, that was Ruthie, okay.
Thank you. So thank Ruthie also for us, but I do, I thank you for the report and the thoroughness of it, and especially your enthusiasm about this program, and how you've basically come in here like gangbusters and are putting kind of your own stamp on it, as well as really trying to get as much feedback as possible, so that we can improve it for the kids, for the district, for the parents, you name it. So I just applaud you for that. I had an opportunity to get my kindergartner into the soccer program, so most of my comments are basically going to come from that, which is the, not so much at the elementary level, but the ideas you have around increasing participation at the middle school. I know that we're going to ask for approval for the eighth graders to participate in boys' tennis, but I wanted to know, and this might be for another meeting, but I wanted to know more information and ideas that you might have to start increasing, either students in the middle school that are coming out for sports for the first time, or to keep the momentum going, because they have done it in some sort of, you know, program for elementary, and they're doing outside programs, but then all of a sudden, we kind of fall flat for them at that level. I heard a lot from the assistant coaches and the kids about the importance of having a feeder system that go into our high school, and the importance of that when you are talking about scores and winning, that, you know, you have to continue to keep the momentum all the way through. So I'll stop there and just ask if you have any short comments today, I know that we don't want to spend a lot of time now, or just any comments in general about that.
I mean, not only, what you're making a great point, because not only that, do they, do our programs become better, but it keeps the kids from doing other things and getting involved in other things, if we can start them in sixth, seventh, eighth grade, you know, and that's crucial, whether it's through the Intermuro program they're running now, or we allow the eighth graders to come and play with us, but it's going to prevent kids from doing other things that aren't good things. And it draws me in a direction. I know as a young kid, if I didn't have football, I don't know where I would have been. When I was in seventh grade, I started playing football, my whole life changed, and I didn't want to get in trouble anymore, I didn't want to do certain things, I wanted to go out and play sports. So it drew me in, you know, I wouldn't be where I am today. I stood around my mother yelling at me, saying, you're going to practice, and, you know, I wanted to go down in the cottages and hang around, and, you know, so that's, one of our goals is, with the middle school, is to involve as many as we can, that we keep them on the right path. And as they come up to the high school, then they want to be part of what we're doing at the high school level. And part B of my request today, we're going to ask for approval of Rule 53 from the MIA to allow eighth graders in a couple of sports, there's three sports that we got approval from District D today, to allow eighth graders to be part of our high school team.
Do you feel like that there's enough opportunities for middle school students in the middle program, to, Intermuro program, to get involved, or do you think that we could do more as a district of providing more opportunities for them?
I think, I mean, the best thing we could do was bring back middle school programs. I mean, the best thing we could do for our community and our sports programs is to bring back those middle school programs, because now you're going to have 20 to 30 kids that are participating two to three to four days a week with a coach, with an adult, and we're doing the whole grade thing, where they've got to pass their courses in order to participate, and they focus on being athletes and doing, putting their energies towards good things, not other things that they may be doing. So I think that's the most important we could do in this community, if you really want my true opinion on it. Well, we don't have that right now. This is the next good thing, and the Intermuro piece has been brought up, and I do not think it would affect Intermuros, because I think some of the kids are playing Intermuros. If the really good, a few of the really good athletes are not in the gym doing certain things, and they're with the high school team because they're mature enough to do so, other kids may come out and play and say, hey, I'll play, because they feel like they have a better chance and will compete better. You know, and, I mean, I would assume that the kids from the eighth grade that do want to play at the high school level are going to be the more mature kids that feel they have confidence enough to compete at that level. I don't know how many will get, I mean, I'm not sure, you know, but we have to go down to middle school and hang some signs and get some announcements going and things like that.
Just my last question regarding that, in the same way that you're meeting with each one of the coaches to brainstorm around how to increase participation, are you doing the same thing with, are you reaching out to the Intermuro folks that are in charge of those programs to see how maybe they can increase, or helping them increase participation also?
Yeah, I talked with Doby about it, and how he's running it, and the signup sheets, and we've asked our coaches too, to go down into the middle schools and run field hockey clinics in the spring, and cross country and things like that, to get those kids involved in sports at the Intermuro level, that's what we have now, and that way there, they will transfer into ninth grade and come and play, you know, sports.
I know the Gateman Youth Hockey Group is, Doby's looking for help also to increase participation there, so...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cliff?
Good job, and I love your enthusiasm.
Thank you. I love your daughter.
You do? Well, good, I do too.
No, she does, she does a great job, great with the kids.
I like the upbeat of the report, I really do. The report is very upbeat, and you're accentuating the positive, which I really like. Tell me a little bit more about meet the candidates, I've got a couple of questions on that, because many years ago, when I was a school administrator, we had, not meet the, meet the coaches.
Yeah.
Let's think of presidential campaign. Ah, yeah, 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 it's been a long day. We had the same thing, but in my school, it was mandatory. Is it mandatory at Wareham High School?
It's not now, but eventually it's going to be. But we, I'm going to do... It's not now, but eventually it's going to be, but we, I'm gonna do two years, my, my goal is to have two years of the way we're doing it now, is to ask parents to come, and, and, and we're, we're also piggybacking on in the paperwork tonight, so what we did was, we had our coaches meet the first week in, in December, I probably should've put that on the report, under the details, but, the first week in December, we had our, all our coaches meet with the athletes, and he or she gave the athletes our consent forms and our packet of forms, and we told, asked the coaches to tell the kids on meet the parents, I had a big highlight in meet the parents night's gonna be, I think it was the seventeenth this year, whatever it might be.
Right.
That, they have a couple of weeks to go home, get those papers signed, get their physicals together, their users' fees, and bring them in, and then when they come in on meet the parents night and meet the coaches night, the paperwork's done.
Right.
Put it in a big box, and I can take it, check it, make sure everybody's got the consent form and things like that.
Well.
And it helps the coaches in the long run, because then they'll have to deal with the practice one. We probably had about fifty percent of them turned in, maybe forty to fifty percent, which wasn't real good, so, you know, we're hoping next year we get to seventy-five, then we start making it mandatory.
I'll give you a little tip, that what we did, they got no papers ahead of time, they got the papers that night when the parent showed up, and the parent had to sign the papers on the spot. We had about ninety-five percent participation, because if the parents didn't show up, the kids didn't play.
That's a good idea.
And it's a good way-
Maybe practice one if they don't come, or, yeah.
It's a good way to get the parents involved in the program, because, you know, we're all in this together, you know, it's a team, and it's not just about education, involving the parents in education, it's invo, involving the parents in extracurricular. So, we gave nothing ahead of time, those, those parent signatures, those, uh, permissions forms were, were signed when, uh, meet the coaches night.
Good idea.
And we broke it up by sports and the same thing, and we had a guest speaker, and it was a theme, and we talked about sportsmanship and so forth and so on, so I'm glad you started that, uh, I really, I really appreciate your efforts on that. Um, now, on the report itself, uh, I find it curious here, because I'm sitting next to a zebra here, we pay more for zebras than we do for supplies.
Fishes are expensive, if you look at-
Are we bound by a certain number? Do we have to have all these zebras out on the field running around?
Yeah, they, they, a, a soccer game has two for the bossy level, two for the junior bossy level, at seventy-two dollars, uh, uh, an official, and, yeah.
This is a real racket. Is the MIA responsible for dictating all these officials?
They, uh, on the website is the official fee, it goes up by a dollar just about every year.
I think Mr. Faunce can tell you about the extensive training that's required for these officials, there's quite some time they spend in the classroom.
Okay, getting serious though, user fees, are all the user fees been collected?
Yes, yeah, every user's fee's collected and/or waiver for every athlete that participated in the-
All right, now the waivers, are the waivers a waiver, or is the waiver being paid by another source?
The waiver is, they fill out a waiver sheet, and they have to have proof of income.
Okay, but is it a waiver, a waiver, or?
They sent a bill to the WAA, and they have always furnished us with a check, uh, for whatever the, the cost would be for the waiver.
Okay.
So, that's not reflected in this report yet?
That's not reflected.
So, that'll be coming in in the future?
They, they were very good last year, we had a check come in, in July for the spring season, so I, I anticipate that that'll be in the positive for the winter.
Cause I'll, I'll do a little division, it probably won't come out right, but, that's good.
Can you estimate the size of that check for this fall?
It was about, almost thirty percent waivers, and I have it on the, on the report, I have how many waivers, twenty-one waivers in football, seven in soccer.
So, you're saying the check might be for as much as about eight thousand dollars?
Well, yeah, yeah, perfect world, yeah, it's great, fix the roof, yeah.
Not the high school roof.
I don't know how it works, honestly, but we are submitting it to, what's the?
WAA, I, I believe it's gonna be around, uh, the, the cost, uh, is, if we get full payment, will be right around three thousand and change, I believe is where it comes out to. Um, I, I haven't done the math with Mark, but I, I believe that's about what we receive.
That's about thirty percent, but okay.
And in terms of maybe adding a little bit to your workload, uh, I'd like to see a couple of things added to this report.
Got it.
Some of the things Tina had in her report, uh, her, which I liked, I'd like to see it also continue, was the number of students participating in each sport, unduplicated head count, um, I think that's very beneficial to know.
That's in there.
For each sport.
Sixty, yeah.
Oh, I missed it, sorry, and then the other thing is, I, I'd like to know the win, the, the record, I'd like to know the win-loss record for each, for each team.
Okay.
All right?
Yep, the win-loss record.
But, no, I, I, I really, really have to commend you on your, um, start here, um, it's upbeat and refreshing, and if there's anything that we can do to make your job easier, please let us know.
I really like you here, I really do, and, and I like, I like this job, and, you know, I didn't know how much I'd like it leaving, limited coaching three sports and my coaching wall right now, I miss the coaching, but, but I do love the job, and I, and I like the community, and, and I have, you know, I, it's gonna take two or three years to do some of the things that, but I'm looking forward to it, it's fun, you know, it's a challenge every day, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you.
Just, just for the record, Dr. Sylvia, I'm also a zebra, and I took some umbrage with respect to that, and there are no zebras for tennis, so we saved money there.
Oh, all right, okay, no zebras in tennis.
I counted the users, they got waivers, there were fifty-one waivers.
All I know is, I go look out in that football field, and I say, all these zebras running around, there's more zebras out there than our players.
Yeah, seven of them, yeah, they look for things to call sometimes.
Mr. Faunce, you're up.
Well, I happen to be president of the high school basketball referees, they are not zebras, so we don't like that term, and it'll be reflected in the next Wayham game.
Confident interest.
What, what else is new?
First of all, excellent job on the report, Mark, uh, a lot of good stuff that a lot of us, um, didn't know, so it's nice, if you don't pick up the local paper, you don't see the honorable mentions and all of that, um, so I like that information. Um, one thing that you did that I thought was fantastic was the captain's, captain's lunch, or breakfast, whatever, um, that's a good idea, because what you did is put a little responsibility on the captains for them to go and relay it to their team, teammate at their level, at, at another student's level, um, I think that's, uh, a good thing. Maybe you can approach the school committee and ask for a waiver to coach wrestling, maybe you could strengthen the kids and get a-
Now you're talking my language.
I know, Mr. Palladino just rolled his eyes, but, um-
He loves it, he'd be the, he would love home wrestling matches, they're fantastic.
We'll, we'll talk about that, um, all right.
Go to the next meeting, cause I'll get a proposal together.
Okay. You get feedback.
Ravine, you're a wrestling guy, right? Right? He loves it.
Is this like, Kobe kind of wrestling, or what?
No, no, it's college, it's great.
I'm only kidding.
Do you get, um, do you do some type of evaluation at the end of the year, end of the season, on all your coaches, and get feedback from them, that's, it's a two-part, and do you do any, uh, feedback or any type of surveys with the players, uh, because sometimes you might get interesting comments on things that they feel are going right or wrong, uh, so is that something that you do or plan on doing?
Sounds like, uh, the new teacher evaluation system there, Mr. Faunce, but, uh, Mark has a proposal that he's trying to negotiate with the, uh, WEA, where he has what I think is, is a great evaluation system, uh, and he's on, he's in the process of working on that. Uh, what he did this year, which I thought was creative, is he had them fill it out ahead of time, and he didn't use it as a tool, he used it as, for them to reflect, uh, it didn't, you know, and then they brought it back and kind of responded to some questions that he had, so we're really hoping that we can move forward with that evaluatory tool, and I think it's just gonna help our coaches, uh, to become better coaches, and certainly it, it forces them to be reflective, and, and I'll let him answer this, the students' piece, cause I'm not sure where he's at with that, but certainly we'll, I'll hand it over to Mark.
Yeah, I don't, I don't love the student piece, uh, to, to do that with, with the coaches, I mean, I, I know as a, as an ex-coach, I mean, I, I, I'd rather have meetings with it, I'd rather have one-on-one meetings, and, and a lot of kids, if they, well, they weren't with me yet because they don't know me, but if there's situations where they're disappointed, I wanna, I hope there's a, there's a time that they're comfortable enough to knock on my door and say, you know, Mr. Loranger, I'd like to talk to you about something that's really bothering me, you know, and, and, you know, and, and anytime anyone does that, I address it right away, I will go to the coaches, say, this is what, whether it's, you know, you can't believe half of what you hear sometimes, you know, and what it is, is what it is, and, but you do address it, so, I mean, I, it's something that, you know, I would certainly look into, but I, I don't love the written part of that as much as dealing with it face-to-face and, and, and talking it over. Um, the coaching evaluation piece, um, I could forward each and every one of you, I believe I forwarded, uh, Mr. Ravine's one, I could forward you what I had, uh, presented to, uh, Mrs. Mars about, about what we would like to do in the future as far as sitting down with our coaches and evaluating them, and I know when I was a young coach, you know, I, I was coaching, I was head football coach at like twenty-six years old, and I was way over my head, and I remember these, he's laughing, cause he was, he was in school-
I was a head hockey coach at twenty-three and was way over my head, so I was right there with you.
And I remember though, I remember the athletic director going over this evaluation sheet with me and saying, this is why you're not doing well, and I remember the following year, looking at saying, all right, my paperwork wasn't good, and things that I, and I really worked on trying to improve that, it made me a better coach, so that was my point in putting that packet together, and, and on that is, you know, evaluation for everything, you know, how they deal with the media, how they deal with parents, how they, how they deal with their forms and equipment orders and collecting equipment and sideline decor and all things like that, so, I will forward you that if you would like it.
Yeah, I'd just like to see it, you can, don't need to have any names on it, just-
Yeah, I'll pull you a blank one.
Yeah, um, I have to give credit to the female athletes, because I think they're very instrumental in why the GPA average is up there, because all the sports that, uh, girls' field hockey and all of them, the GPA is a lot higher than, than the boys, I think there's a lot there that they contribute to that overall average.
Yeah.
Um, the condition, I mean, safety-wise of the football field, Mark, what are, what are some of the things that you're looking at, I know that field has a lot of use of, uh, maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know, field hockey, soccer, um, Part One of Tiger football, and, um, every year, the middle of that field is, is a nightmare, and I don't know if, um, there's any history of reports, but I know on the football side, I, I saw a lot of injuries, um, from players slipping and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Is that something that, there's, I, I know Mr. Palladino in a perfect world would like to see turf over there, but-
Mark, we have turf, it's not, can, can, Doc Ravine should talk about the turf that's on now.
Please do.
Um, we currently actually have, um, a company, uh, putting, um, some sawed down in those areas that, uh, the field was badly, uh, beaten up, and, um, I don't know the exact number, but it's probably over twenty thousand dollars that's being done by a gift, um, and that some of the procedures, um, as far as when people use the fields, need to be tightened up, and, uh, that's something that Mr. Loranger and I and Anna will be discussing with Part One of Football, and, um, will get resolved this year.
One of the, one of the goals that could be a, a quick fix to that is, we have one field in town, we have one football field in town, which is, I don't even go to a lot of towns and just find one football field, so we don't have a place to put our, our Tigers' program, and they're important to us, I mean, they, they, we talk about the youth, and they're important to us, we wanna make sure they're, they're participating in playing sports, is to go down a maybe minute field and measure out, I, I've met with, um, um, the groundskeeper, I'm sorry, Jimmy, and we're talking about going down and measuring it, and maybe getting a football field lined out there with goalposts, and now that can be the Tigers' home field, and they can go ahead and play there. It also can be a backup for our JV freshman football, if we need to move a game from, from our Spillane Field, we have another field. I think we do that, that's gonna help that field tremendously. The other part of it is, you have, you have asphalt underneath the bleachers, and, and it rains, and it drains right down onto the field, and I know there's a, there's a little French drain there now, but we need some kind of, um, where we can put a lip of maybe cement or mortar, I'm a mason, I could do this, and, and run it into one area into a big holding tank, so that we get the water off there, because what's happening is, is it's becoming wet, and kids are going on it, no matter what sport we're playing, and it's ripping it, ripping it up, so we need to get that water out of there, and Scott and I met and talked about putting some kind of drain of big holding tank over to the, it would be, I think, the south side of the field, and, and dig it down and put down crushed stone and put a big drain in, so now the waters that comes down off that, uh, asphalt is gonna drain to your left if you're sitting in the stands, I mean, I think that would help a lot.
The other issue is, a few years back, they tarred more of the area, they multi-service it, and, but what they never did was look at where the runoff was going, and the runoff goes directly onto the field, that wasn't the case ten, twelve years ago, uh, so that's one issue. The other thing, you know, Mark's always gonna be looking, and he's gonna continue to look for grants, there's grants that every once in a while come up to upgrade the field, and, you know, and, you know, Mr. Faunce, as you mentioned, you know, the turf, I had an opportunity to go to a few fields this year that had turf, as a matter of fact, I was taking pictures and sending them to Mark on Sundays, saying, look at this field, we could really use this field, and there was one field we were at, uh, and I was talking to one of the soccer coaches that I knew, he was on there before the football game, and he, he said they've been on there since seven o'clock Sunday morning, and they weren't coming off till nine o'clock at night, and, uh, and it was a, it was a, a day that, uh, it had rained the day before, so the field would've been underwater here at Spillane.
Right.
But definitely, he's gonna be keeping his eyes open, obviously, that's something that we're gonna have to have as a grant-funded or gift-funded, but he is, uh, gonna continue and investigate that, and, and hopefully in due time during his tenure, will make some changes to that field with some type of turf.
Um, I'm good, just the final comment is, hopefully, I know we talked about, uh, the high schools working with the youth programs to, to build that bridge, uh, so I hope the basketball team works with the youth basketball, uh, because I know the girls' program is lacking a lot, they get out of youth basketball where there are ten teams, and then we don't have enough to even have freshman, uh, girls' basketball, uh, so I think it's a good thing if we can get the coaches and players from those groups to come down to like junior basketball, which is here on Saturdays, and, and spend some time with some of the kids, especially the eighth graders that are going into, uh, ninth grade, that, that's a good thing, they like to see, uh, the athletes. I did have one final thing, Mr. Chair, is the banner up yet for our championship basketball? There seems to be a ongoing thing.
It was never ordered, and, and when, um, about a month ago, uh, a student had actually brought it up to my attention, and I ordered the boys' and girls' banner, and it should be arriving next week, so that will, yeah.
Well, I was told before that the banner, we had the banner, and the, the AD lost it, or the former, I, I don't know, but I mean, it's too bad that Wayham won a state championship two years ago, and, and-
The state championship banner is up, I believe-
Is that one up?
That's up.
Yeah, that one's up.
The banner Mark's referring to is last year's, I believe they were co-champs of the league last year, and, and the girls won the league.
State championships.
The state championship, but there was an issue with the state championship banner.
But Ken, you're right, that should've been, you know, that should be, I'm hoping to get it after game one, cause that should be a game one celebration, I mean, you won the, you won the SCC League in girls' basketball and boys' basketball, co-champs, that should be a celebration.
Absolutely.
That's a great event for those kids, that, that's hard work.
Excellent report, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, I concur with all the praise you're getting, I, I love everything you're doing. Um, not surprisingly, I, my colleagues won't be surprised anyway, but I, I took your analysis and did a little bit more, um, my focus in the past has been on the cost per participant. Um, your principal knows that well, um, it's, and you gave me all the data, uh, so that it was, it was available, um, you may be surprised to know that it ranged, depending on the sport, from about sixty-two dollars to about five hundred and five dollars, that's a huge range, and that does not include the unallocated costs, which as you point out, because some of it was an all-year cost that you paid in the first, first, um, first semester, uh, it would be a distortion to use that, um, but ultimately, it is truly a cost, so do you have any thoughts about the wide range of cost per participant?
Yeah, um, one of the sports you're talking about, the coaching salaries are high, they've Yeah, um, one of the sports you're talking about, the coaching salaries are high, they've both been coaching a long time, top step. Um, that's contracted and then the, we need to increase the numbers in some of those sports, you know, where.
By the way, you did increase the numbers in cross-country and golf, and I applaud you for that. Uh, cross-country at seventeen is, is a great, great result.
Kobe did a nice job with that.
Kobe did a very nice job, yes, and, and he's a new coach and it sounds like a good one.
And our, and our boys in soccer, also a new coach, increased his numbers, uh, substantially too. I believe, you know, by like maybe eight or nine, which is pretty good for, for soccer, so I, that, that's, that's good as well. Uh, but I mean, it, it breaks down to, you know, it, it's contract area, it's what it is for the coach's salaries, but they're just getting more participation. That one particular program only had one senior on it, so we're going to return twenty-one athletes off that team and, and, and that's one of the programs that, you know, we're hoping that gets down to the middle school and get some interest with the eighth graders so that we can have some girls walk into that building ready to go.
Uh, I don't, I don't want to make any specific suggestions for a variety of reasons, but if you can think of an excellent sport that we don't offer that would be less expensive but popular with the students.
I wonder what it would be.
One is very, one is very cheap, especially if you get the mats donated, it's very cheap.
I, I didn't say the word.
You know, every day I have to hear about this.
I go and wrestle them.
And so now I'm going to hear about it twice a day. Um, you know, I, I would like to just.
I, I don't recall asking for Mr. Palladino's comments.
No, no, no.
But I, I would like to.
I need to, I need to have something, because I went and wrestled the other night and I, and I'm still hurt.
Did you two ever wrestle?
No.
We will, we will, we'll do it right here.
I, I was a hockey, I was a hockey player during the winter season, but.
I think we'd get more participation at the school committee meetings.
See, I won't play hockey with him, he'll embarrass me in hockey.
But I would like to, if I can, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just comment on, on that, um, and I guess maybe it's, it's my, uh, the lens of a hockey player of probably being one of the most expensive sports.
I didn't even say hockey, because hockey isn't in this.
No, I know, I know, no, Mark mentioned it, so I'll, I'll utilize it. Um, you know, I, I don't think it's fair to penalize kids, uh, that are involved in, in some sports that are more expensive. I think Mark's approach of trying to get more kids into it so that we can dilute that cost per pupil, um, I, I think is, is the tact to take. But I don't think it's fair to penalize a kid because the sport that they enjoy, um, is, is football and, and for safety reasons, we have to spend X amount of dollars to make sure that they come out of the games and out of the practices safe. Um, I, I think it's important for me, because I have to be very competitive when I'm looking at eighth graders that are, that are making decisions as we speak about what school to go to. I need to show them and I need to have these programs in place for them to be competitive. And obviously, Mark will speak to the reasons why it's important for these kids to be involved. But I don't feel that it's fair to penalize a kid or to eliminate a sport unless we have the numbers statistically over the years to back up, um, removing a program. But, but I would ask that we give Mark some time and, uh, and let him build up the numbers. He's already done yeoman's work at this point in time and really, I mean, by contract, he started on, uh, the twenty-eighth of, uh, August, so, uh, this was the beginning of the season.
Let me be clear, there's only one way to do a sport and that is the right way and a safe way and a, um, so that's clear. So if you're going to do it, you got to do it the right way.
Agreed.
Um, the, unfortunately, the term fair, you know, if the world was fair, a lot of things would be different, it just isn't. And we'd have a lot more money to use in Wayham for everything, uh, if the world was quote fair and the state was doing its job. But anyway, um, but we're running, we're running a deficit, even taking away the unallocated cost. Where we ran a deficit of about seventy thousand dollars just after the first, um, first trimester of sports. So you start to, that's the hundred thousand minus the thirty thousand. Agreed, Scott? And now that, and that doesn't include the unallocated.
Right.
If we add another forty thousand, but that's, we can't extrapolate that because some of those are one-time costs, at least half of them. So I, I'm concerned about such a high deficit because it sounds like we might be approaching a deficit that is beyond the budget and then we get into all other issues. So I'm just, I'm just throwing it out because I trust both of you to do what's in the best interest of the kids and I love sport and I wouldn't ever want to see that sacrificed. Um, and the final thing I want to say is, and I admit full disclosure from the girls tennis coach. And if we can't have the eighth graders involved in girls tennis at the high school level because there were too many, and they're, it's too popular already, which I, it's true, a lot of people sign up, but they tend to drift away there when they realize it's a difficult sport. Then at least we ought to be able to get an intramural tennis program going for the fall. So I would really appreciate it if you could look at that in lieu of the eighth grade participation, because many towns have feeder programs and through their, their tennis clubs, and we obviously don't have one of them.
That was my argument with District D, D Chair today, and I think I spent forty-five minutes in there and I was allowed fifteen minutes because that was my point being is that tennis does not have a feeder program. And these kids, they're not playing tennis anywhere, it's not like it's, it's basketball where they can go and shoot hoops or anything like that. They're not playing anywhere, you know, and so by them saying no because we had a good showing in, in last year, I said that those girls are not going to play now. They're going to go do something else and, and my point being is that.
Trust me, Mark, this isn't a criticism, if I was going to hire someone to do my, you know, my lobbying, it would be you.
Yeah.
So.
But it bothers me that, I don't know, it, it bothers me that we got punished for having decent numbers in that sport, but. They did okay the boys tennis and the boys and girls spring track. The, they, we did get the waiver okay for that.
I noticed. And I'm glad, and I'm glad you did.
Before we, before we go on, can I just have a minute, you know, if, if possible? I just want to thank Mark, it's, it's the fall season is now complete. Obviously, you've seen the work that's gone into the program and we also want to thank Ruthie. But it's been, uh, a breath of fresh air, as you can kind of see, even with the wrestling question every day. It's, uh, Mark has really, uh, taken a load off of my plate and allowed me, uh, to work more on instruction and curriculum and, and day-to-day operations. Uh, where before, that wasn't always the case, so I want to thank him for that. I think he's really streamlined the program, he's brought a, a level of excitement into the athletic program. And I just want to publicly thank him, a lot of times, uh, we're dealing, putting out a few fires here and there. Uh, but I really am, am happy that Mark's on board and I'm excited, uh, to have him here. I, I think he's taken athletics this fall to a new level and I'm excited as we, as we move forward, so I thank you for that minute.
You're welcome. I have one, I have one suggestion for both of you, and that is to perhaps consider at the end of the year thing that we do with athletes, an award for the highest GPA team. I'd love to get some competitiveness.
Yeah.
Around that idea and we'll find out whether Mr. Faunce is correct that it goes to a, a girls team or not. I got to believe the guys will get a little competitive about that too. And, and having competition about academic performance is, is all good.
My money's on the girls tennis team.
My money's on the girls.
My wrestles would stay.
Yeah, but if, I was going to say, if we had a wrestling team, they'd, you know, hands down, hands down.
Anything else for us, Mark?
No, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have a form to sign for the, um, for the, for the waiver.
Maybe more conversation.
Do you need a vote?
Do I need to, um, address that a little more?
Yes.
Okay. What it is, is that it's, um, academically eligibility, uh, Rule fifty-three from the MIA states that, um, if approved by the receiving secondary principal, which would be Scott, the middle school principal, uh, superintendent of schools, school committee chair, athletic director, and the coaches involved, uh, I need signatures for everyone involved, uh, that eighth graders through District D, which is our district that we participate in, uh, their chair, there was six members of the board today, uh, voted yes for sports, uh, boys spring tennis, boys and girls spring track, to allow eighth graders to participate in, uh, athletics at, at the high school level. Now with that, they are still under our guidelines for academics. They have to be academically eligible, they have to be in school to participate. Um, I will receive a attendance list, uh, every day that they have to be in school to participate. They follow the same rules as the high school kids. And the reason why we, we actually applied for girls, uh, spring tennis as well, we applied for those four sports. Uh, Mr. Gilman had, had, um, okayed that and, and made a good point was that they are programs that don't have feeder systems naturally in place. Like baseball and softball have feeder programs in place. There, there are young kids in Wayham, boys and girls playing softball and baseball. In tennis and track, they were not, so we were pushing for those sports to try to increase our numbers. And in, uh, I believe one of the sports, it was, um, maybe, um, tennis, boys tennis, we only had six competitors last year.
And it was spring track.
And spring track had eight, I believe. Yeah, boys spring track had eight, and that's just, you know, not enough. So we, we, we're, we want to increase our numbers and again, direct those kids into a different direction.
Okay, I'll take a motion for discussion, please. Second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, this would.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, this would only be in the case that you could not field an adequate number of participants? Because I'm curious as how you know you're not going to have those numbers this year? With your new enthusiasm and, and.
We took the, um, past, past two seasons.
I, I know, I know, I know.
So.
This is all based on the past, but you're, you're a forward-looking guy. Uh, how do I know that you're not going to be able to?
Excuse me, Cliff, just as a point of information, does this application have to be applied for on an annual basis?
Every other year.
Every other year.
Biannually.
Okay. Sorry, Cliff, go ahead.
So you, you, so you are hypothesizing that you're not going to have sufficient number of participants in this course? I mean, in this, uh, program?
That being said, even if we do have plenty of boys tennis players, if there is five or six eighth graders that want to be part of it and we can allow them to participate in tennis.
But doesn't that, doesn't that violate?
No.
The essence of Rule fifty-three?
No, because there's no, they would probably not accept the waiver the next time we applied for it. If our numbers increased to a thirty rate, they would probably like, we had twenty, you know, twenty tennis players, girls tennis players, so, so on the signup sheet and they, they didn't say yes to that. So I, I would think that what would happen was we would just not get the waiver the next time around.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The more planned the better.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
You moved, the motion was moved to discuss, so you never really made a motion to what you want, what you just voted on.
Well, by that I meant we would, we would make sure we would have discussion after the second, that's not what, but if I, if I failed to do it properly, we'll do it again.
I moved.
Tell me what you moved, you're voting on to, to approve the athletic waiver.
To, to apply for the waiver.
I just want to make sure.
Do you want us to do it again?
But, no, that's all right.
Okay, we're good.
Rule fifty-three is the.
Okay.
All right, five zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, you can stay right there and talk about the library.
Yes, and Mark's going to come up and get some signatures, because that has to be faxed out tonight before midnight. So we appreciate the support. Uh, while, while Mark's doing that, um.
Mark, can you demonstrate a full Nelson for us?
Yeah.
The guys aren't helping.
Is this, is this about the wrecking ball?
We also have an experienced, uh, head coach that's now teaching at Upper Cape, uh, wrestling.
Really?
Are we doing the library thing, Scott?
I'm, I'm moving on. Uh, Cameron Swett asked me to move on to the library piece, so I'll move on while Mark's getting the signatures.
All right, go ahead.
The, um, a- as you can see in the picture, uh, we have, I think, an upgraded library that we've upgraded over the last few years. Uh, I think we've really brought it to the twenty-first century. And as you can see in the picture, I know it's not a great picture, um, but our library has gone through some, I, I consider major renovations without having to come in front of you. Uh, we have the, the carpet to tile conversion that you can see, it's a much brighter, uh, I think healthier library. Uh, it was, it was damp in there, it was moldy in there before, so that was something we did this year. Um, we also threw some help from the Gateway Restaurant, have received about fourteen thousand dollars that you've approved in the last three years, uh, through two different, uh, uh, grants, if you will. And we've been able to, uh, like I said, really upgrade, uh, the, the technology, the infrastructure, um, the inventory. Uh, we've created a online laboratory, uh, that's not pictured here, but it's kind of to the, off to the left at about, uh, nine o'clock in that picture. There's a laboratory back there behind, uh, behind the door. And, uh, we're able to run online courses and some, uh, SAT prep courses. And to the left of the picture, there are twenty-four computers, uh, with online access, all linked to the Boston Library that allow our students to do research, uh, online through various journals. Um, and then to the right is the area that I'm here in for tonight. And this area in particular that you see with the screen is where we'd like to have a wall built. And this would be, uh, for us to have a presentation area. Um, we had the DECA program in here, uh, just, uh, after this picture was taken and they utilized that area to do one of their, uh, presentations. And the teacher was very happy with the area, uh, but was not happy with the fact that the LCD projector, uh, was on about a three-by-six, uh, screen and really felt that, uh, that would help us out if we could enlarge that. It's also kind of, it gives us a little separation from behind that screen as a study area and it would allow for students to, to maintain that type of atmosphere that they would need to be able to study and for us to do presentations. And it would cause a little separation there. Uh, my one concern is obviously supervision, uh, when you put a wall up, you know, I, I certainly red flag goes up. But from where, um, the librarian spends a lot of her time, not all the time, she's able to see the whole library from where her, her stand is and where her computer is and where she interacts with the kids. And we all, I also talked to her about maybe we'd have to, uh, put up a little mirror there just in case, uh, she's further down from her workstation. But, um, I'm really excited about, uh, what we've been doing in the library, the NIESKA reaccreditation committee, uh, was very excited about the library. And, uh, I, I feel with, uh, the help of, again, a local business, the Gateway Restaurant, we've really been able to revamp, uh, the library. And, um, it's exciting and the teachers, there's two and three classes down there almost every single day, every single period. And I know Jessica, I see you down there studying when you have some downtime as well. And I know you appreciate the, I, I see you on the computers quite a bit, so I know you appreciate that area as well. So what we're asking for again is, is a wall, uh, to be put up in place of where the screen is in the picture. Um, it would be approximately, uh, twelve feet long by eleven feet high. It would, uh, conform to all standards and building codes and things of that nature. And it would basically go from the, uh, the support pole that you see to the left of the picture to, uh, just in front of the globe that you kind of see on top of the file cabinet, which is the, uh, the sidewall of the building.
Comments? Questions? Ken?
Unless I missed it, do you have any estimates, are you going to go for bid on this?
We'd, we'd go out to bid, I have a preliminary, um, estimate, it's, uh, a couple thousand dollars for the whole thing. Uh, I think it was eighteen, I think is what the total was. But I, uh, I want to add to that, uh, I want to make sure we have plugs in the wall. I don't think it's, it's good not to have a wall that long and not to have any plugs. Um, so it's going to bring it up to, I believe, right around two thousand dollars total.
So with a solid wall, you said it would help with the projection, right?
Correct, and sound.
So is there room to put, um, a window to see on the other side or you don't think that's necessary?
I think that defeats the purpose because it, it's tough with China projector, LCD projector, it would, uh, be tough.
So.
Are you all set, Cliff?
So this would make a ru- virtually a room, how big?
It, it wouldn't make a room, because it would still be, th- this area in the front of this picture would still be wide open, it would just create.
It's just, it's like a petition.
Correct.
So, I understand, I understand the, um, the idea of it. But I don't understand why you wouldn't try it out with some kind of a portable petition as opposed to something permanent.
Well, we've had it set up this way for, uh, basically, uh.
Yeah, but you can, you can get petition panels and put them up that are portable in nature, and you'll probably do it for less than two thousand dollars. And then if you decide, decide that you don't want that wall there anymore or for whatever reason you want to expand the media center, you, you've got the, you've got the option to do it. I, I just don't know why you would want to go with something permanent as opposed to something temporary to just to see if the, if it's, just to see if it's feasible to do this. I mean, I'm not questioning you, if you want the wall, I'll give you the wall, but I just think that, I, I don't like permanent stuff when you start petitioning off a room, and that, and that's a really, uh, a nice area. Uh, our media center is a really nice area and I, I don't know, I'd have to visualize it, maybe I can come in and.
Anytime, you know that.
But, I don't know, I, I just don't like permanent walls, I, I just.
I, it's, again, you know, I think it's kind of going backwards to spend the money on a temporary wall and say, okay, yes, we want to have, I, I think we've.
Yeah, but you might say, no, I don't want it.
But I think we've done that with the setup that we have, the way we have it set up and with the screen that's been there since September, I, I, I think we, we, you know, again, it's the librarian that, that is in support of this, I'm in support of it. Most of my teachers that utilize the area, including, uh, three of the business teachers that have spent time down there, uh, really love having it. And again, their, their concern is, you know, why can't we get, you know, this, to be a larger screen? And, um, and this is a way to accomplish that. And again, it's a way to allow for us to have the presentations there and yet, behind the wall, to have some quiet time where students can study and, and not be affected by what's going on in the presentation.
Would this be a, um, um, sheet rock?
It would be sheet rock, but code is, it has to be the metal studs, that's the code.
And it would be wired, do you want to have some outlets there too?
I, I want to have the outlets, they, they're going to have it mounted from the ceiling, so it's not necessarily, it's, it's not a necessity for this wall.
And it can be done for about two thousand dollars?
Yes.
Well, I suppose if we put it up, we can take it down.
I'm not going to be coming back to you that way, take it down, it's, it's, it's needed.
Okay, thank you.
Rachel?
I, I just think it kind of goes along with the trend of presentation and, and there seems to be a lot more, uh, of this type of media, especially like probably through the DECA programs and stuff, and to have a place to actually project it, it isn't really a bad idea. Definitely have it well-wired, have it set up so that it is a multi-use thing. But I think, um, I think you're seeing more and more and more of that, it, it's not so much, we, we have to kind of keep up with the media, um, and I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Rhonda?
The only concern that I have is that we don't have, um, the true cost in front of us. I mean, I, I know that you're saying about, you know.
I have, I have one bid, I'd be glad to scan it and email it to you if you'd like and, and I don't think I have that with me. But I, I do have one bid, but I do like to get, and I didn't want to get too far out of myself, I wanted to know that it was feasible cost-wise. And I do like to get three bids just to make sure it's competitive and getting the best price. But certainly, you know, if, if, I can forward it to you, but it's just a preliminary bid.
And this is just a point of clarification, Mr. Chair, we're going to, we'll need to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, so the only thing that I would ask is in the motion, is that we do include a dollar amount, that it won't exceed X amount? So the bid that you have right now is, is around two thousand dollars?
Correct.
So you would feel comfortable if the motion that we made tonight would be that, that we would agree to this, but it wouldn't exceed two thousand? And so if it does go above that, then you would have to come back and.
That's, that's fair, I'm confident we can get it done for that.
Okay.
If not less, because we still, we're still in the process, once it's approved, to get a couple more bids.
Ken, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, just to follow up on what Dr. Sylvia was saying. At our, in Star Facility, we have conference rooms and we have the, almost like the gym, how you can pull that out. Well, it's, it's made with, I don't know what type of material that if we have multiple meetings, we pull that door out and then they use that white screen for projection. So it's not a permanent wall, it can be pushed back or it can be brought out as a separation. And you might want to take a look at that.
I like that.
As an option, because as Dr. Sylvia said, if you didn't like the wall, just open it. But I don't know how expensive, I don't know how expensive they are, but when we separate the two rooms, we use the, the wall as a projection.
And you use the wall, when it's pulled, it's pulled tight, you can project on it?
Correct.
I, I confess, I, I have some discomfort, even though I know you have an estimate with the point that Rhonda's made. I also share both Cliff and Ken's concerns about doing something permanent when there, you could get the same function, which I agree you need. There's no question that the functionality you're seeking is necessary. But that you'd have that much more flexibility if there was another way of, of doing it, either the way Ken suggested or just normal everyday partitions. Having said that, I think sometimes temporary partitions can be actually more expensive than permanent partitions, so.
That's true.
I don't want to go out on a limb with respect to this. So unless there's some urgency with respect to this, I would love it if you would explore the permanent flexible gym-type things and, and come back to us at the, just literally right at the next meeting that we're having later this month with some harder numbers and also having investigated the, the temporary. Because the ability to, the ability to, I think the best solution is to open it up completely because wide open space is generally more attractive.
Right.
But then to be able to create the closed space very quickly is, is also very attractive. So I would like a little bit more investigation, not to delay you terribly. But of course, if, if you go with the temporary route, that, that purchase of that could be relatively quick. But I'd like to know your thoughts, Dr. Rabinovich.
First of all, I think Rachel has a.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just, I just wanted to add to that, the only problem with like a, like a petition or something, and if you're looking at kind of keeping up with outlets and so forth, you're not gonna have that. So then you're gonna be running cords, you're gonna be running, and this is, this is what you're gonna have in the middle of a library to keep up. And so, I mean, I think that's something you also have to think about as a safety issue.
Trade-offs with everything, that's right.
Absolutely, and I think you have to kind of think about how you're gonna keep up. And that's, that's not acceptable and that's not attractive, no offense, guys. We'll keep the camera up. But it's, it's, you know, that is, that's gonna be a problem, so, you know, the.
And, and at that point, you'd have to weigh what percentage of the time it would be used versus not. I mean, not suggest, I don't want to micromanage it, but I'd love, I'd love to have a little bit more investigation. But Dr. Rabinovich, your thoughts?
I think it's reasonable to ask Scott to come up with some additional estimates and to look at the type of closing wall system that you've talked about. I'm sure it's much more expensive than the construction that he's talking about. But we will look at it and we'll give you, hopefully at the next meeting, all of this. And it is possible, if we're having a, if we had a screen coming down, let's say on that wall, one that was of the right size, you could have the electrical outlets.
Yes.
Up above as well, so we can look at the options.
Electrical outlets, I mean, that was just something I, I'm saying, if we're putting a wall up, let's have the outlets, you're, you know, you've got it exposed, it's just a matter of pulling some wires and, and hiring an electrician. They felt everything was gonna be ceiling-mounted, so it wasn't as much of an issue. But I figured while it's wide open, let's do it right. But certainly I can get the prices, I, I, obviously it's gonna be more expensive, but like you said, maybe it's, it can serve a dual purpose. As long as we can, you know, post the screen, post the LCD projector on it and it's gonna serve that purpose. And, and like you said, we can fold it up if we want to have a large crowd in there. So I'll, I'll investigate it, I know based on the ones we've used in the gym, how expensive they are. But certainly, it's, we're, we're some investigating.
Is the committee comfortable with delaying a couple of weeks?
Yeah.
Yes? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Mr. Luzan?
I'm gonna go down with Bob.
Oh, okay.
And Joan's gonna come to the podium as well. Joan, come on down, please. We come before you this evening with a couple of changes that we'd like to make about the East Wareham School. I think everybody realizes that East Wareham is where we have our preschool program. And that the need for, the reason that we have a preschool program is because of special needs students that we have to provide services for once they turn three years of age. But we also have two other programs that help expand that program. One of them has to do with our model students, so that this is a comprehensive preschool where the children are in classes with regular ed students as well. And we have our income-eligible students that we are now able to receive some reimbursement from the state for, that are attending the East Wareham School. One of the problems that I've had over the last couple of years is that the management of East Wareham is split. Joan has three buildings, as we all have heard from her school improvement plans. And so she has responsibility for the regular ed components of East Wareham. But through special education, Bob has the responsibility for the special ed components of West, of East Wareham School. And we have a person on site who is the early childhood coordinator that is really there. And it's my feeling that I would like to have her be the person that is in charge of that site. Just the way at West Wareham, we have a clinical coordinator, Wendy, who is in charge of that site. That then report back, just like Wendy does, to the special ed office and then also reports to me as superintendent, because they would have an individual contract. Bob has gone through it, he has placed what we have currently and the proposed. And if you go to the last page, if you are a person when it gets late like this and you want the bottom line under budget impact, the early childhood coordinator currently has a salary of seventy-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Forty-two thousand, four ninety-two from LEA and thirty-three thousand from grants. And she currently works a calendar year as a teacher of a hundred and eighty-three days. If we then looked at the proposed, she would go up to a hundred and ninety-five days like our assistant principals have. And salary would go up by just looking at what the cost of a day would be and adding that additional money, salary goes up to eighty-one thousand, one hundred and six dollars. Fifty-five thousand from LEA, twenty-five thousand for grants. The total impact on the LEA budget is twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. What do we get for that twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars? We get someone who is responsible for the education of the children on that site. Someone that the teachers can go to that is on-site and has the responsibility of that building. Currently, we have an assistant principal at Hammond who has responsibility. But perhaps she's in the building an hour a day, she's not there full-time. And I believe we need somebody on-site, full-time, and that this is the way to go. So I have Joan here in case you have questions about her feeling of the change. And I have Bob here under, who put together this proposal. So we are, await your questions.
Rachel? All set?
Yep.
Rhonda?
I'd like to hear from, if possible, from Mrs. Ames. And Bob, if you have anything to say just about this proposal.
For Mrs. Ames?
Steven, I'm sorry. Joan, I'm sorry. It's late.
I'm in favor of this. For a couple of reasons. Every time we have the school improvement plan and we have the staff surveys, the ones that come from East, every year, there's always a comment on there that says we don't have an administrator on-site. Mrs. Ames does her best to go over there as often as she can, I go over there as often as I can, we're there on call. But the staff feel like they would like to have somebody who is in charge and can make an immediate decision if it's needed. When we've had slight emergencies in the past, the secretary always has to call and, and either find Mrs. Ames or find myself, which they can do, but at least if there's somebody right there, you can make a, a really quick decision. Mrs. Morgan is being the early childhood coordinator, does a lot of outreach to the preschool program in the town, works closely with early intervention. It's just a great fit in order for her to continue in that role and have the leadership for that particular building. So when the teachers have questions, they can go directly to her and it's not coming to me and then I have to refer back to her or kind of takes the middle person out of it. So, yes, there would be one less building for me, that is a plus. I think I would still have, obviously those children are coming into the kindergarten, so I'm still going to have contact, it's not like we're, we're just leaving the mouth there. But it makes sense for her, Mrs. Morgan, to take over that role where she can be right there on-site.
And the preschool program is a district program. We have students from the Deacon's District as well as the Minnet District that attend the East Wareham School. So it is a district program.
I think the only other thing I would add to that is that from the perspective of supervision, supervision and evaluation of teachers, it puts the evaluator on-site, not only for East, but also for Hammond with Mrs. Ames being able to focus there and, as well as, as needed, helping out at Minnet with the evaluations that are, are there as well. So it puts the evaluator on-site at East, which I think is a real plus. And the other thing is that in the last three years, we have, that program has grown a great deal in terms of the scope of what we do. But I feel that it really is at a point that it's stable right now. I don't foresee that we have a need to use East for any other reason. We do have income coming into that program and there's a long projection of that and that we have this income-eligible project that we have a capacity for up to a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars a year that we can build for certain services through early education and care, the Department of Early Education and Care. So financially, I think we're in a stable point, programmatically, I think that we're at a stable point that we can make this change and really look at the East Wareham Elementary School as East Wareham Early Childhood Center as something that's, that's there for the foreseeable future.
Thank you. One of the things that we talked about before when I first learned of, of the proposal was there's, first of all, is this job going to be posted? So then additional people, then just the current early childhood educator would be able to apply for it?
Correct.
Okay. There are many programs that the current early childhood coordinator is currently doing. How will this affect those responsibilities? Because I know that she is doing a lot of programs out there today. Are we not renewing some of those programs or are they gonna continue? Is there going to be additional help if now she has building responsibilities? So I want to hear from that perspective and then also with all the free time that, that is now gonna be available to the assistant principal at Hammond, only kidding, free time? I know, that's what I mean. But, but I know, but she is taking on this responsibility, she is now taking on that responsibility. What, what is the direction or what is it being replaced with?
Mrs. Ames helps us out at Minnet for us, because with the walkthroughs that we do, she's responsible for doing walkthroughs at Minnet. She's responsible for doing evaluations and observations at Minnet as well. And then she still has the hundred and ten kindergarten children and families that she's overseeing at Hammond. She, with her guidance background, goes into classes and she's doing lessons with the children. And each year she has a theme, so she's expanded upon that. But the big piece, and she does also help out when the team chairperson, especially towards the end of the year, when all the, the team meetings come up and there's a lot that happened, she can help oversee some of the team meetings at Hammond. That would help as well.
And as far as Mrs. Morgan's position and, and a shift of her responsibilities, the, the, those responsibilities, some of them that you mentioned are through the coordinated, I'm sorry, yeah, the Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Grant. And we have taken out a portion of that salary, and that shows at the bottom of page three, approximately eight thousand dollars of that, of her salary would shift over and we would have a position that uses that money to be able to do the work that she's been doing at through the CFCE grant. So we're gonna take those responsibilities away from her and shift them to another person. Currently, there are several people who are doing some of those tasks and we would, we would either expand them or have a, an individual position to do the things that Mary is doing currently.
Okay, so the total LE budget impact is twelve thousand dollars. Does that include the grant funding or no? Just out of the LEA, it's gonna be a twelve thousand dollar impact?
That's, that's the LEA impact.
Yeah, okay.
That allows us to do the things that we just mentioned. So it allows us to have those, those tasks that she is doing through the CFCE grant continue using those CFCE funds. That's about a ninety thousand dollar grant.
Can you put some words to those letters?
I'm sorry, Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Grant.
Thank you.
Sorry, Dr. Sylvia.
Where's the twelve thousand coming from?
I've, I've built the proposed budget for FY thirteen and it's, it is built in there.
It's built in, okay. So we better make sure that we get all the money that we need.
That's right.
Point of information, the timeline associated with this starts before FY thirteen.
The transition begins before thirteen and, and posting, that's correct. And, and also having conversations with the staff and.
Will some additional funding be needed for this budget year?
No.
Okay. You all set? Cliff?
Is this a competitive grant or is this an entitlement grant?
There, the, the Coordinated Family and Community Engagement is.
You can use the letters now.
Yeah, okay, the CFCE grant is, is a competitive grant. But it's, it's one that we've had for quite a long time and it's based on, on income levels in the, in the town. The income-eligible grant, the other amount of money of a hundred and fifty-six thousand that I mentioned earlier, is a unique project in that we actually became vendors for the Department of Early Education and Care. And, and the grant has a six-year contract period with the likelihood of that expanding. And when I say likelihood, it's because the last time they did this for private vendors, it was eleven years before they, they put the grant out there again. But our contract states six years and so we're, we're good to at least two thousand and sixteen.
But you, you catch, you catch me personally, as a member of the school committee, just one member, kind of in a, in a, in a, middle of a tough situation. I absolutely agree. I absolutely agree that Mrs. Siemens needs some relief. I really do. I mean, I think that she has been amazing as for what we've asked her to do. With that being said, I've also said publicly that I don't want to add to administration in any way, shape, or form. I think we have to bite the bullet. If we're going to be making cuts, if we're going to be, if we're going to be on an austerity drive, if we're going to be cutting programs and having user fees, I really don't feel comfortable adding another level of administration. So, that's why I'm in the middle with this. You know, because I absolutely understand that you'll need some relief, so...
Let me, if I can, we already have the person there. It's not that we're adding another person.
Well, that was going to be my third point.
Okay.
My third point was, we've already got somebody on staff and basically, from what I can see, we're just going to be asking this person to do some evaluations and to maintain the budget for East Wareham. You know, and we're going to raise her salary by almost $13,000.
Because we're asking her to work an additional 13 days?
Yeah, well, it's actually, it's actually a $5,000 increase and we're asking her to work an additional 13 days.
13 days?
Yes. And the job assignment that she has, the job responsibilities, some of them will stay, some of them will change. So, for example, the Community Engagement Grant, those are outside of the scope of the work done at Early Childhood Center. And so, that will shift away from her. What will shift towards her will be the primary responsibility, the sole responsibility really for evaluation and supervision for that building.
What we're running to right now during the summer with this position, because she's currently under a teacher contract, getting the preschoolers in and registered in transportation, she doesn't start her work schedule now until the regular teachers do. So, there's information we need to get to transportation and we need information from families. And sometimes she has that information. So, she's been great about us calling her and asking for this, but if she can have these additional days, it will help us in the long run.
Thank you for that clarity. That was, that was a very important point. Thank you. Now, let me ponder this a little bit more.
Ken?
How long has the East been open? Four years? Do we reopen it?
It was closed for one year. It was open before that.
So, this is its third year since it's been closed.
So, we have been surviving up to now with the way the system is. This is adding a principal title to the, to the early childhood coordinator? What am I missing here?
No, she keeps her early childhood coordinator title.
So, now it's the early childhood coordinator and proposed that she becomes the coordinator of East Wareham.
Early Childhood Center.
So, it's...
Where's the, where's the principal coming?
There is no principal, just the way at West, we have no principal. We have a coordinator of clinical services at West and they report directly to Mr. Luzan who has...
Yeah, but West and East is a little bit different, Dr. Rubenovich, with all due respect. West and East, West and East are not the same. We're not talking apples and oranges here.
I don't have any money...
Apples and apples. We're talking apples and oranges because the situation at West is quite a bit different in terms of clinical support and so forth than you have at East, with all due respect.
When we reopen East after it was closed with the proposals and everything, it comes from the special ed budget, there's only a few accounts that are LEA. So, I don't have access to spend any of the money. I always have to go to Mr. Luzan anytime there's an expenditure that has to be made.
Okay. But clinically, it's still a little different. Go ahead.
Yes, absolutely. But I think you need to remember that many of the children, and now I will refer back to the ancient days that you and I both understand when we talked about...
I beg your pardon.
That were point four classes because of the needs of the children. That is the kind of special ed that we need to give. We have multiply handicapped children that need lots of services and you need to have somebody onsite to make sure these therapies and services occur.
So...
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, the reason I'm here is that I think that it was not running as efficiently as it should and as part of our improvement plan, we felt to bring this forward to you. That's my recommendation.
Ken?
This is something that if approved, you're looking to put in place now?
There'd have to be a transition.
We have to do a posting.
Or is this for the start of next school year?
Correct. The transition would happen, the official, you know, start date of the change of the name of the school and having that position in place would be July 1st. However, we want to be able to have some transition time. There are a number of things that still need to be done. We want to present the proposal to the, to the staff. We want to be able to have the current coordinator be involved, which she has been in budget planning for FY13. So, we're really looking at those transitional steps during the spring in the very same way that Mrs. Ames will have some time to be able to transition away from those tasks. So, it allows those two people to work together on those things that have been unique to the two different positions and it gives us just a chance to be able to be up and running rather than trying to get started in September when the kids come in.
I'm probably on the same lines as Dr. Sylvia. I have a problem with adding administration, but on the flip side is I've been amazed at how Joan does it. She probably gets two hours' sleep because when you have three schools, that's a lot of responsibility. To me, it seems like the benefit would be more towards you than to the East School, freeing up some of your time. Would you say that is more of the intent of this?
No, that was never the intent.
Not at all. Not at all.
Unintended consequence that happens to be possible.
The reality is that we, the program, rightfully so, particularly considering early intervening, has grown a great deal in the recent years, not only for the special education population and the severity of the needs of the students that attend some parts of that program, but also in terms of serving the community more. We have, we have 20 slots, 20 children at any one time, up to 20, who are not able to afford other kinds of preschool services. We're able to do that and we do it in really coordination with some of the local preschools so that kids were sure that, for example, working parents who may need to leave the house at 6:30 in the morning have a place to go throughout the day until as late as 5:30, I believe it is, at night between our program and also the local daycares. And that includes our time during the school vacation periods in which we're able to assure programming. So, these are all new services that have been added on. The concerning part for me from the special ed side of my job is that we have not had somebody who's identified as the administrator of the building there full-time. And while Joan may speed over or Nancy Ames may speed over if there's an issue that comes up, it, in terms of the kids and their needs, it's important to have somebody there, particularly given the fact that we've grown. And also in terms of the staff and their desire to have somebody that's there on a regular basis, their go-to person is in the building, that has also been an important piece to this.
My final thing is, Dr. Rubenovich, I'm going to assume then you are 100% behind this and feel that this is a win-win for us?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Remind us how many students this new position would be responsible for?
There's currently 108 preschoolers as of today.
Thank you.
Did my enrollment report today?
Plus...
And it grows. It keeps going.
Yes.
Plus, she would still have district responsibilities, is that correct? She would still be early childhood coordinator?
Mrs. Morgan is?
Right.
Yes.
So, she would still have duties like at Hammond and...
Within that building. She would be part of the team when we were discussing early childhood transition between preschool and kindergarten.
That's one question, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Okay. Did you want to follow that up now?
It's up to you, it's your time. I can ask, no, I'll wait.
Okay. Okay. I am, from a management perspective, putting aside an educational perspective because I don't feel particularly competent to evaluate that, but from a management perspective, I think this makes total sense. There is a compelling logic for why Hammond and Minnete go together. That same compelling logic in my mind does not exist for East. Secondly, given the focus that every principal, and that certainly includes Joan, has to have on academic results, I consider East to be a distraction from that and I would like to free up a little bit of Joan's time to focus that much more on regular K through 12, K through six, five, K through five students as compared to a very important piece but not regular education. So, from a management perspective, this makes perfect sense. I'd like to better understand the utilization of Mrs. Ames under this organization. She would, how many teachers are there at Hammond?
There are five kindergarten teachers and a special ed teacher, plus you have all your finite specialists.
You have independent arts?
And then you have paraprofessionals and the custodians.
No, no, just teachers. How many teachers are at Hammond?
So, six. There'd be five kindergarten plus a special ed teacher. So, six teachers.
Okay. So, what you've done is because that's a relatively small number, you've augmented her evaluative responsibilities to include some number of teachers at Minnete.
Yes.
Okay. Not ideal, but makes perfect sense given the importance of that. So, that, so she augments the work of your assistant principal and ultimately your instructional leaders.
Because don't forget, we are evaluating every teacher this year, which we've never done before.
I understand completely. No, I'm, I understand, I understand that. And you think she has, she will end up doing enough walkthroughs and observations in Minnete to be able to do that job well?
Yes, she's doing it already.
She's doing it already. And of course, you'll have a little bit more time to do that under this. Okay. Now, I want to better understand the management structure as it applies to student services in the sense that you are now firmly in line management with this. You are in line management with West Wareham. Now, you've got two buildings for which you're responsible. And yet, I noticed that this position reports directly to your supervisor and the West Wareham coordinator reports directly to whom?
Well, they both actually, on page two, you'll see that, and it's actually missing on page one and I apologize for that, but if you look at the top of page two, early childhood coordinator under the proposed, she would report to the supervisor as well as myself.
Well, there is no as well. I mean, there's, the direct supervisor of this location would be...
Me.
You, not the supervisor, not Stacy.
It would be directly to me, that's correct.
Just as Wendy is directly to you.
Yes.
So, this is, I think, the verbiage is not quite accurate because it looks like it reports to Stacy. I'm very comfortable with that for a variety of reasons, but I was less comfortable when I was reporting to the supervisor. So, you're assuring me that both this new position and Wendy at the West Wareham would report directly to you and their evaluation would be done by you?
Their evaluations are done by me.
Okay.
And that may be in combination with Stacy. If we have two evaluators, two observers, we tend, we try to have two people do the observations and then we do the summative together.
How do you have contractual issues?
There should be only one direct supervisor. People need to know to whom they report and I'm sensing some ambiguity.
Well, that is what we've done for all the programs that are district-wide programs. For example, the teachers in those programs, they understand, for example, at Minnete, that their direct supervisor is Joan. However, because they're district programs, we are looking at it from a district perspective. So, we do one observation and Joan or one of her assistants would do one of the observations.
If Joan wants to take input from any source that she thinks would be valuable in making the ultimate decision, that's fine, but the direct supervisor of the people in Minnete, for example, should be either the assistant principal or ultimately the instructional leader starting next year and Joan is the ultimate final signature on the summative. If she wants to take input from you, Stacy, anywhere else that she thinks is valuable, that's up to her. But everybody deserves to know exactly who their direct supervisor is. Otherwise, there are problems. So, I want to be assured that the direct supervisor of these two locations for which you're going to be responsible is you. That's correct?
Yes. Direct supervisor? Go ahead.
Yes, that is correct. Bob is the direct supervisor. He would do the observation, but I'm the person with Bob's input that does their evaluations because they're contractual. In other words, Wendy has an independent contract like principal does and therefore it's with the superintendent. So, her evaluation is done by me with input from Bob.
I, I understand that. I'm, in fact, I'm glad to hear that because that creates two signatures, two opinions, and you get around, I know...
And that will be the same that I envisioned for this particular position.
Fine. Fine, but I would suggest that the actual summative evaluation be filled out by Bob with you as the second signature and the final signature. Yes?
Yes.
So, that if you need to reword the contract, you can state that the director of student services is your direct supervisor and even though I'm signing the contract, I mean, that's not a problem. Okay. I'm fine. We needed to go back to Cliff.
Well, it's funny because that was one of my questions. I was going to be a lot more abrupt than you were though. You were very diplomatic because to me, it was duplication of effort. I mean, it says right here on page two that most definitely is the supervisor, special ed director, student service, pupil services, and the superintendent.
I'll take the blame for that because I asked Bob to edit those words.
Okay, that's fine.
Because of the contractual obligation.
It's not about blame, it's just about getting clarity. I'm asking these questions for clarity.
And if I can maybe give you one bit of other information on that, currently, this is why we're talking about the transition, currently, in the current contract, under the definitions of observer and evaluator, we do not have the clinical coordinator at West or the early childhood coordinator. That's something that has to be negotiated, but we do have both people, at least one of them, I think both people actually, involved with Dr. Chapman in that observing and analyzing teaching too.
Good.
So that they will be ready to do that.
Keeping in mind, we're posting this position.
Yes, we are. The supervisor of special education though, is the person that is actually going in and doing observations there because contractually, she is in the language to be able to do that for our teachers. So, both of those locations should be helpful in that.
Right.
So, I wanted to say that.
Well, it's just like the department heads at the high school.
Exactly.
Teachers don't report to the department heads, but the department heads are now in the evaluation process. But they're not real supervisors, they're not really bosses, they're not, because the language hasn't changed in the contract on that.
It has in the news that they are supervisors.
Supervisors?
Yes.
Right.
But they don't have anything to do with hiring and...
That's correct. So, if someone from the outside calls up and says, "I want to talk to the principal," who are they going to talk to?
They would talk to the person who's in charge of that site, which would be the early childhood...
The early childhood coordinator?
Yes.
And that, and that conforms to any negotiated thing that we have?
They call me right now. I have to call the East Wareham. They call me right now. I have to call East Wareham School because I'm not on site, so I don't know what the issue is or what has happened.
As far as answering the question about if it conforms contractually, that, that's some language that's going to have to be changed in the instrument, in the contract.
Who's contract?
When you said whether we call it a principal, the, the only person that we have that requires a principal for a site would be the department of education. And they are okay with what we went through in the process of getting West Wareham.
Forget West Wareham. I, I don't want to talk about West Wareham. Let's talk about East Wareham.
But the same will be true, that that's why we have somebody else who is in charge, even though we have a site person at that building who's in charge. But they're not a principal.
And, and actually, a very common practice for preschools that are in their own building. So, for exam- I was, my office in Stoughton prior to coming to Wareham was in a preschool setting. There was a coordinator for that program. That was the site coordinator, that was the site administrator.
Was that person the unofficial principal?
Nobody ever said that. Um, they, they were the coordinator of the.
We're, we're appointing an unofficial principal.
At the preschool level, in most school systems, they don't have a principal. They're the coordinator. They are the ones in charge. They are the leadership. All right, Mr. Chair?
Um, the other, the other thing that I'm gonna, I'm going to, I don't even know if I'm going to amend the motion or make a motion with this. Right now, approximately thirty percent of this is being paid by grants. Approximately, give or take. Do you see that changing in the future?
I don't see a change in, in.
So, if that was made as part of the motion, you wouldn't have a problem with that?
Well, would you, I, I can't forecast grants, but I can tell you with the history of that grant, both of those.
No, but I, we could, we could make the motion saying that we will approve this based, uh, we will approve this on the condition that at least thirty percent of it is paid with grant money.
Maybe more, um, with our LEA money.
Yeah. I mean, we're talking about, when you say thirty percent, um, we're talking about an eighty-one thousand dollar salary.
Yeah.
And, and currently twenty-five thousand, seven thirty-three.
That's about thirty percent, right?
A little under thirty percent.
I got a little over thirty percent, but that's okay. I just did it in my head.
Twenty-five times three is seventy-five.
Yeah. All right. Okay. So, we could turn it the other way around. Seventy percent of it to come from the LEA. Thirty percent to come from outside sources. You'd be comfortable with that?
I, I think we can.
Okay.
You outside, Cliff?
Yep.
Yeah, no, I did. It was, it was when Cliff was asking the question around preschools and what they're called. I mean, just coming out of that, that, you know, we went to a, a private preschool, but they're, they're never called principals. They are, they're called directors of the preschool or whatever it is. And one of the things, the reason why I like this is that we, we talk a lot about the readiness of students coming into our elementary schools and into, into our kindergarten. And I'm hoping, and, and I would like to, you know, have an update on this a year from now on either what we're seeing, what additional programs, you know, now that we have, I know that we have an early childhood, you know, coordinator. But now that in charge of a building and, and responsible for the programs and the readiness and, and the even promotion, I would love to see this being open to as many students as possible to get more students into preschool, again, to help us with the readiness going into kindergarten. So, I'm in favor of this because of that fact, and I'm really hoping that this takes us to the next level when it comes to helping, um, the preschoolers in Wareham get ready to start school and that more parents take advantage of it.
And, and I would just like to add to that, that, that it is my belief that, that while we always want to raise to a higher level, I think one of the reasons why we're coming to you is that we have come up to substantially higher level at this point. And that's why we see, again, stability of programs and the, the range of the programs that we're offering. Many districts have, do not have a site-based system. They really go out to preschools, the private preschools, and provide their services there, or they're scattered among the elementary schools. But to have a center, to have a building, to have a center-based building that is serving the whole district and to have the types of programming, both for special education, model students, income-eligible students, and we have what, you know, what has been formerly called walk-in students who just need, for example, speech and language services. There are a variety of ways that we're, we're working with them that we haven't in the past. We use an arena arrangement, for example, in some of our evaluations where several specialists may, may observe the behaviors of the child together and be able to look at them from their own disciplines. So, these, these are ways that have been found effective in preschool services to be able to provide a wide range of services to a very large number of, of children. So, we've, we've come a long way. We certainly want to be able to keep that going. Uh, but it, it is a very, very good program. We had NIAC there for accreditation last week, I believe. And we're looking forward to the results of the NIAC accreditation and anticipate that we'll be coming to you with that approval, we hope, sometime in the future. About ninety days, I think.
They have up to ninety days.
On January twelfth, the state will be coming out with a, a bunch of rubrics. But one of them will be an administrator rubric, which will apply to every administrator in the system with, with the exception of the superintendent, which includes both of you. Would you expect to use this rubric, which will be probably, maybe not in this case, uh, I was going to say an attachment to another document, but would you expect to use this rubric for this new position?
I would think that we would for those positions, yes.
Yes. And how will you, how do you hold the West Wareham Academy Coordinator? And how do you envision holding the East Wareham Academy, or not Academy, East Wareham Child Center, or whatever we're calling it, accountable for results? How do you envision determining whether they're doing an average job, a great job, or a not-so-good job?
Well, I mean, the easy answer is by, by, or the simple answer, I should say, not the easy answer, is by the rubric. The question is, based on the population of students who attend that program and their, and their performance, the student performance in this early intervening program, what kind of progress have they made? So, for, for the special education students, it's going to in part be their progress on their individualized educational plans. For the children who are model students, it's going to be their ability to move into, and transition into a kindergarten successfully. For the income-eligible students, it's going to be our ability to be able to, um, to do a variety of things with those students, but, but to see growth in a preschool curriculum that, that we would expect kids to make where they otherwise wouldn't have that opportunity to do it. So, it, it's a little difficult with East because we really serve three general categories of, of needs for students. Some of them income and.
I understand that, and I don't want to go into a lot of, spend a lot of time on it. But the bottom line is, there has to be accountability at that level, just as there is at every other level. And there should be some constructive tension between Chris and Joan, um, yeah, I think Chris and Joan, with respect to the, the abilities, the skills of the, of the students that they're receiving into kindergarten.
And I think, I think across the country, people would agree that there are more and more opportunities for children to be in preschools. And that typically, very, very often, I should say, is related to the family's ability to pay for it. So, beyond special education programming at preschool where our obligation starts at age three or two years and nine months, uh, I think that we've expanded for both model students and for income-eligible students to be able to have just that happen.
Look forward to it. Anything else? Are we ready for a motion? Okay. I will take a motion for approval of the reorganization of the Minnet, Hammond, and East, um, management.
I'll make a motion for approval as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Well, I'd like to amend that motion.
Okay.
I would like to amend the motion and to have the cost of this new configuration paid at least seventy percent, uh, seventy percent by the LEA and thirty percent from outside sources.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Could I better understand, Cliff, what you're trying to accomplish?
What I'm trying to accomplish is, in the past, we've had grants that have fallen through, and the LEA has to pick up the whole cost. All right, now, I, I've been led to believe that this has been co-paid, co-paid for, for lack of a better word, um, by grants and the LEA, okay? Even though with this configuration, the amount of money being, uh, being applied to this configuration is a little bit less than in the past, but I understand that it's going somewhere else. So, but be, be that as it may, I don't want, I, I want to be assured that it's just not like everything else. That once the grant dries up, the LEA is going to pick up the whole fund, you know? And, um, so if, if they can't go seventy percent, if it goes above seventy percent LEA, um, commitment, then they should come before us and say, you know, hey, we're over this seventy percent. Uh, the grant's dried up, or whatever the case may be, and, uh, we need to discuss this further. So, I just, I just think it's a safety valve there. And they can always come back to us, we can amend the amendment. It's a future date, if we have to. It's not cast in granite. But right now, I would, I would say that it, it would be wise for us to say, continue to look for outside sources to fund this new, uh, expense. We've got additional expense in this configuration.
Recognizing that they would present a budget on an annual basis based on some configuration.
Of seventy thirty.
Right. So, you're saying that if during the year, they weren't able to honor that configuration, they would have to come back to us because obviously, each year, they would be coming to us with a configuration.
Right.
So, you're saying during the year, if the costs were not as anticipated and the revenue was not as anticipated.
Well, obviously, we'd, obviously, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't pull the plug in the middle of a school year. But I mean, in terms of the future, in the future of the program, we'd have to find out other funding sources or whatever. But at least it'd be a discussion about it. Too many times, grants dry up and we get caught with the bill.
Oh, completely agree.
And I'm not saying it's not worthwhile, because early childhood education is.
I'm, I'm going to vote against the amendment, but I want you to understand why, and that is.
Doesn't matter. This is America.
And that, and that is because I think we're going to get, have the opportunity every year, and I don't want the situation to be that during the year, um, there's.
It was just an intent.
I understand. And by the way, I share your concerns about the fact that grants dry up and all of a sudden, the LEA is on the, on the hook. I think it's part of the problem we have. I don't think it's so much a management problem. It's a problem of the needs of our children seem to grow and grow and grow. But having said that.
And I, and I would, I would, it would have to be an absolute emergency for me to support pulling the plug on that program.
I understand. Anything else on the amendment? Okay. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I counted, is that?
Aye.
One, two, three. You're in favor, Rachel? Okay. All those opposed? Aye. It passes three, two, zero. Okay. Now, we, the amendment becomes the main motion. Any continued discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Five, zero, zero. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for, for being patient with me.
Thank you, Bob. Long day. Okay. Gifts?
Yes. Um, we would like to ask the school committee to accept a donation of seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from the Gateway Tavern. The funds were generated from an annual golf tournament, and they have been earmarked for money for the Wareham High School Library.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Did it say what it was to be used for in a library?
No, it could be used for anything that the principal feels is necessary in a library.
That's why he said walls.
Including a wall?
That's why I wasn't worried about the two thousand dollar cost.
Okay. Further discussion?
Sounds like we were stowwalled.
Can I just ask a question though?
You have the floor.
Uh, thank you. If it's for the Wareham, Wareham High School Library, does that include textbooks? Could it include textbooks?
It could be library books. That would, it, I think it would not be the intent of textbooks, to be quite honest.
We should talk to the Gateway Tavern next year.
He's a good guy.
Okay. Thank you.
The librarian works for.
Yes. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Five, zero, zero. Next.
Um, the Dick Maloney Youth Foundation is pleased to provide funding for the Hammond and East Wareham Schools for the Reading is Fundamental Program, and enclosed is a check of one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. And we ask you to please accept that donation from the Dick Maloney Youth Foundation.
So, move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Five, zero, zero.
And Mrs. Siemens is recommending that we accept the gift of dictionaries for our grade-three students from the Wareham Elks Lodge. Susan Gifford, exalted ruler, organized this donation. And the dictionaries were distributed to all third-grade students at Minnet and Deccus. And then we have the address.
Any, could I have a motion, please?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Five, zero, zero. My thanks to all of those donors. Much appreciated. Any further business?
I have one thing, Mr. Chair. Do you want to go first?
Go ahead.
So, I have, um, I just have one thing. Uh, last Tuesday, I met with Tracy Crago, who heads up, um, the Falmouth VIPs program. Falmouth VIPs is a, a program that is funded.
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa. Can't throw out an acronym and not.
I'm, it's later on.
No, right now, VIPS.
Can I have a motion? Should I have to say it right now?
Right now. I'm the chair.
Falmouth VIPs is Falmouth Volunteers in Public Schools.
Thank you.
It's a program that has been in Falmouth for thirty years. It's currently being funded forty percent out of the LEA, sixty percent grant, uh, or through fundraising efforts. Again, the program has been in Falmouth for thirty years. Their main goal and their mission is to promote volunteers in public schools as well as encouraging, um, youth volunteering in public schools. The reason why I met with them is because, again, thirty-year program, and they have done amazing things when it comes to supplementing programs in the Falmouth public school system. Examples include mentoring programs, in-school mentoring programs, but also partnering with Boys and Girls Clubs and Big Sister and Big Brothers to continue that work outside of the school system. Programs to have volunteers come into the schools or helping to encourage parent involvement, helping to encourage enrichment, enrichment programs, transportation to different events, as well as, um, the encouragement of students doing peer volunteering, working with younger kids around volunteering and volunteering in the community. One of the things that I was really impressed by was that they do a, kind of a career service day or a, you know, a, a program where students go out, um, the juniors go out into the community and they do a shattering program or a shadow in a company for two hours. They had ninety-two percent participation by their junior class that actually went out and volunteered in their town and surrounding towns to really get a flavor of, of some of the things that they're interested in. But ninety, ninety-two percent of the junior class, that I just felt was phenomenal. Also, their mentoring program, um, they have, um, they have connected high, or at. Also, their mentoring program, um, they have, um, they have connected high, um, or at-risk students with mentors, um, that they feel and have proven have helped these students continue to achieve and graduate, um, who would have probably been lost. The reason why I'm bringing this to this committee is that I have, um, I have talked to the chair and also the superintendent that I would like us to take a look at this program to see if it's something that we would consider funding. Um, again, it, what the funding would consist of is actually hiring a person for the district that would be responsible for Wareham VIPs. Um, so this is just more of a heads up, more information to follow, um, after I talk to the chair in greater detail to see if we can get this on the agenda sooner than later so then we can ask the folks from Falmouth VIPs to come down, including a member of their school committee, um, to present to the group, just so we can have that information and as we're going into this new budget season, to see if this is a program that we think could help, um, increase enrichment programs as well as parent involvement and student enrichment, um, programs here in Wareham. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, don't think we need questions at this time, there'll be lots of time to ask, answer, ask questions in the future. Any other business? Yes, sir?
Uh, I'm a little, uh, confused, a little bit dismayed. We had, um, quite a group of people here at our school committee meeting and it was over an issue, um, a curriculum issue, um, having to do with social studies at the middle school, and yet we haven't had any discussion on this. Don't you think a meritorious discussion?
Go ahead, I, okay. Um, I have had, uh, a meeting with the, um, association, we have an MOU ready for signature, um, that I'd be happy to bring to the committee in our next meeting.
Well, I think they should, uh, they definitely, well, we had, uh, an audi- we had so many people address the school committee, uh, and yet the school committee is not privy to any information, whether it be a fix or whatever, and if there's something in litigation or something in, um, in, something that has to be, uh, done legally or, uh, with the labor board or whatever, uh, certainly that a discussion in the executive session would be in order. So I, I'm a little, I'm, um, I'm a little put out that we haven't had more information on this, um, this issue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, thank you. Uh, my own personal view is there's some aspects of this that are, um, private, appropriate for executive session within the prerogatives of the.
And let's have executive session, we need to have a debate about this.
Let me finish.
All right.
Um, that are within the prerogatives of the superintendent. The, my sense of the, uh, people that came forward to speak to us was that, that the only real resolution would be a budgetary resolution and I personally don't feel in a position to, to be able to say with any certainty what, how things are going to look in the future with respect to that program and until we get through the budget process, I don't think I can honestly say to people that we've got something constructive to, um, to respond to their concerns with.
Well, see, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I disagree.
Okay.
All right, a budget is our philosophy in numbers and either we're gonna have a curriculum philosophy that's intact, that is very, that is dysfunctionable with the twenty-first century, or we're not. The budget is our philosophy in numbers, it's our educational philosophy in numbers and that's why I'm put out that we haven't had any information on this at all.
Well, my problem with that statement is that we already have compromised our philosophy multiple times.
I know.
With, because of budget constraints.
Okay.
And this is just one more time where we may have to do that and while I think we probably concur one hundred and fifty percent about the goals with respect to the curriculum and other aspects, um, they're sometimes not achievable as a result of financial constraints, but I totally, as you know, respect your concerns and your opinion on this subject.
Thank you for your patience.
Not at all. Anything else that the committee would like to talk about? Um, given Dr. Sylvia's concerns, those things that are appropriate for executive session, would you schedule that for the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Oh, it's so much fun. It's actually really good. It's a good article.
It was a good article?
Oh, no, that's. It's given.
Oh, was that today?
Seventeenth, it's the Friday. It's what you mean. Oh, no, it's not.
Um, hello.
Can I just?
No, Friday, I can't, and then tomorrow.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna follow this because, um.
Yeah, and we forgot it, did you mention the other meeting? I will deal with.
I asked questions before and my boss said I'm not in that area, so I shouldn't be addressing those. You know how that is?